of Community High School District 128 for Monday, October 26th. Um, if we could all recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
I do. The United States of America and to the response which stands one nation. God.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Pat Rudy.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Karen Lundstedt.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
Pat Rudy, President.
Okay, so we note for the record, every all the board members are present tonight. Um, our agenda, we're going to first start with a, a report from our consultants, uh, updating the status of our superintendent search. And they'll present the, uh, profile for the new superintendent. We'll then open it up for public comment. And I believe we have six letters, Mary, is that correct? Okay. Um, and I do want everybody to understand in the, in the future, we're going to continue to try to read all the letters. Um, but we will probably truncate any one letter off at about three minutes in the case that, uh, a letter goes on and on. Um, we got feedback from a number of people over the, since the last meeting about, uh, the lengthy public comment period we had last time. So we'll, we'll try our best to read all the letters. Um, but we do want to, to limit it to three minutes per letter if we need to. Um, President's Report, we'll have a update from our student school board reps. Then we'll have a superintendent's report covering a number of, um, items, including the latest on school reopening. Uh, we'll approve the consent vote agenda, which we reviewed in committee earlier this month. Uh, and then we'll have updates from program and personnel, facilities and finance. Uh, Jim, I imagine you're going to go over the resolutions for I A S B.
Uh, Pat, we're going to do that at the P and P meeting next Monday.
Oh, okay. All right. Uh, so anything else from I A S B, Jim?
No, nothing.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Karen.
Just the, uh, starting or going back to, uh, remote information.
Technical difficulties with Zoom meeting.
Hey, Pat, you're on mute.
Pat Rudy, President.
Okay, um, so then we will convene an executive session tonight. Uh, topic is collective negotiation matters, five wild C S one twenty slash two C two. Uh, we will not be taking any action after that consecutive session. All right. Any other things? If not, I will turn it over to, um, Superintendent Search. Uh, aren't you going to kick that off or?
Uh, yeah, oh, sure, Dave and Linda. Go ahead, Prentice. Well, let me introduce Dr. David Clough and Dr. Dr. Lynch, Linda Yonkey again, who are facilitating the search process on behalf of the board. They have done a lot of work since the last time, uh, that, uh, we talked about initiating the search, uh, a number of weeks ago. So Dave, we'll turn it over to you and Linda.
Uh, thank you. Uh, pleased to be here. Uh, it was really a pleasure these last few weeks to, uh, have so many one twenty eight participants in focus groups, uh, that Linda and I met with. Uh, the board will recall that when we met for our planning meeting back in September, uh, you asked us to do a series of focus groups. And then also to put out an online community survey that, uh, any stakeholder could participate in. Uh, we have done that. We held twelve focus groups with, uh, district representatives, building representative, students, uh, teachers, support staff. Uh, and we had a hundred and four participants in the various focus groups. Uh, and they were enjoyable for us to listen and very, uh, informative to us about what people in the district and who work in the district are seeing as the strengths of the district, the challenges and the characteristics they would like to see in the next superintendent. Um, so, uh, there, this report, uh, we're recommending, uh, after it's been, uh, we're finished tonight. We recommend that this report go on the website, uh, under the Superintendent Search button. So, uh, people are able to review it should they like. Um, so with that, um, I'm going to turn it to Linda. And she's going to review some of the information that came from the, uh, participants in the survey. And again, we had eight hundred and thirty-five participants. And very honestly, I have done many, many, many searches over the years. And I can't recall ever working with a district where we had that level of participation. So, uh, it was just really good to see how engaged the community is. And, um, uh, we got some really good information. So Linda?
Thanks, thanks. Yes. And it, I, I echo, I haven't been doing searches as long as Dave has, but I have never seen anywhere close to this level of participation. It was, it was really encouraging and the, the focus groups were phenomenal from the students through parents, staff, uh, board members that we learned a lot and, and, um, so what, what I'm going to do now is go through the, um, through the survey results just very briefly. And if, uh, Brian, I don't know, or if someone can put up the document, it would start on page thirteen where the, um, yes, there we go. So there's the breakdown of who responded to the survey. There, uh, again, a total of eight hundred and thirty-five, but, and people could mark multiple categories. So a parent could also be a teacher or an administrator, could also be a parent. Um, and so, or, or anything. So, um, uh, you had about nine hundred, that number adds up to nine thirty-four because people marked multiple categories. But, uh, again, I, another kind of distinguishing thing about this survey is I've never seen this many students respond. So that, that was outstanding and, um, we enjoyed our focus groups with the students and, um, in, and then it was nice to see their contributions, um, on the survey as well. So if you could move down a little bit to capture that first chart. Um, this was asking for the strengths and I, I did a little disaggregating by, and I assume you've looked at this. So I'll just point out a couple of things. Um, there we go, uh, maybe a little bit smaller or bigger, I mean, uh, so it's a little more readable if, uh, uh, I guess there's no in-between there. Um, uh, but to, to notice on this, there was a list of things to choose from, of course, and people were to choose three. And these are the greatest strengths of the district. And, uh, you can, you can see there's pretty much consistency that the first one was the development of student skills and communication, creativity, innovation, critical thinking, problem solving, technology, or twenty-first century skills, it was called in, in, um, another place on the survey. Um, that, that's a pretty strong thirty-eight percent of everyone, um, responded that, to that. So that made that number one. By the way, there's if, if, um, if a group or, uh, we only listed things that made twenty percent or higher. And so if you see a blank, it means that in that subgroup, it didn't reach the level of twenty percent that responded to that. Um, and you see that under the staff, their number two was, um, uh, uh, strength was adequate resources. And we did hear that in a lot of the focus groups that resource, that, that people recognize that, um, they are blessed to live in a district that has resources to do, um, the kinds of programs and hire, uh, personnel when it's needed. Um, but, uh, again, staff really, and, and you would understand why staff would, um, would notice this maybe more than the other groups did. And I thought it was interesting that students' number one choice here was use of technology for learning. And I don't know if we weren't on, online, whether that would still be number one for them, but I, I think it's great that they see that as a positive. And also it's interesting to me that twenty-seven percent of students, their number two answer, and no one else, this didn't rise to twenty percent in any of the other groups, but they said safe student and staff learning environment. That's a really important thing for, um, students. And if they see that as a strength, I think that's phenomenal. That's a really good reflection on the district. So again, um, um, fairly good agreement, uh, readiness for the next level of education, high achieving learning environment, overall achievement, environment that attracts and retains highly, um, effective personnel. And you notice that the staff has that ranked higher. It's their third thing. And that, again, that, that's understandable. You would, um, expect that teachers would, would, um, uh, our licensed staff would, would identify that as meaning something really important that other groups might, might not think. So we can go on to the next, to the next chart. Um, some of the next page. Okay, so this is, um, the challenges, the greatest challenges. And a-again, um, interestingly, instructional methods that engage all students was number one overall at thirty-one percent. And, and, uh, but the, it was number one for students at thirty-seven percent and parents. But, um, staff did not identify this. And, and so that's, that's kind of an interesting, um, um, thing to note. But teachers, um, one and two had to do with, um, focusing on closing achievement gaps and focusing on the needs of economically disadvantaged students. And look at how high those numbers are, fifty-nine percent and forty-eight percent. Um, but overall, um, everyone knows in agreement nurturing each student's unique gifts and needs was important. Uh, that was the second one. And then going down, uh, social, emotional support of students and development of skills in those twenty-first century skills areas. Um, uh, in fact, that was number three for parents and, um, um, number six for students. So we can go on to the next chart.
Linda Yonkey.
So this one is the strengths and challenges of the, um, uh, top three managerial or organizational, uh, in, in that area instead of the more academic area. And I did not disaggregate this one. I just thought it would be good to look at the strengths and challenges against each other. And that number one, fifty-four percent, that's a very high number, again, when people are only picking three in this category. For fifty-four percent of people to mark reputation of the district as being a strength of the district, that's, that's a lot of agreement. And then fiscal stability being important that at forty-nine percent. Um, then, uh, communication with parents in the community, um, a support for education and communication with parents and community are next as strengths. Then, uh, school safety a- as a strength. Again, that's a really nice thing to see. If, uh, students and staff feel safe at school and the community feels that the school is safe. And then up-to-date technology, they're at number six. Challenges, um, uh, again, notice that the percentages are lower. That would mean that it's more split. So there, there perhaps wasn't as much agreement about what the challenges are. And, but the one that came up as number one at thirty-eight percent, long-range strategic plan and implementation, the second one, connection with those who have no children in the schools, um, which is always a challenge in, 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 um, districts. And then, so sometimes you'll see on these charts, if, if you see the, uh, that two items have the same percentage, but they're still ranked like three and four. Um, that means I'm rounded up to whole numbers. So that means one was above the other. But it, the tie means the exact same number of people answered this, uh, that question. Um, and so the open two-way communication and communication with parents and community, it's kind of interesting that they're both communication items were three and four tied for number three, so to speak. And then modern school facilities, um, and class size. And those are issues that I don't remember much coming up in, um, focus groups, a little bit about, uh, facilities. In fact, there, there was a lot of praise about the facilities, uh, and, um, the cleanliness of the school and the recent, um, um, ren- renovations and remodeling that had been done and, um, but, uh, but there were some, I, I do remember one, uh, one or two people saying, you know, looking to the future, we need to think about the facilities. So going down to the next one, the three goals. So this is thinking about priorities for the next superintendent. And again, here, there's a lot of, uh, agreement, um, student well-being emotionally and emotionally safe and confident. So it's interesting that, um, it's number one overall at forty-four percent. And, um, students fifty-six percent. So, and, and that, that's not surprising. I think students feel there is a focus on that and they want that to continue. Um, uh, that, that's an important priority or goal for the new superintendent. Um, and staff and parents both at forty-one percent, um, responding that that's important. And then, then again, there's that development of twenty-first century skills was number two overall, one with parents, two with students, four with staff. Uh, and there's that student engagement with through best instructional practices was number three. And, um, um, the culture of collaboration was two for staff, which isn't surprising at all. The, the, uh, the staff are going to work directly with the superintendent more than parents or students will. And, and, uh, I've, uh, find that to be common that, that a staff and looking at a new superintendent would hope for someone who's very collaborative uh, with all stakeholders. Again, fifty-three percent, that's a pretty high number. Um, and, um, uh, interestingly, the staff number one was relationships with staff and community members, uh, at sixty percent. Uh, so again, not surprising that teachers would see that as something important, um, for their work. And again, um, um, improved achievement and, uh, communication. I, I skipped over number five and relationships with staff. So, and then the last, uh, chart, the next one. It's a little bit bigger. We may only be able to see half at a time. Um, but this, this was looking, this had people pick five things. So, um, so you'll see higher percentages because more people had the opportunity to pick the same things. And I think one notable thing right at the beginning is that those first two items were, um, number one and two for everybody. And, um, the second one was number four for staff, but there's a lot of agreement, like a big percentages, fifty-six, fifty-four, fifty-six, fifty-seven, sixty-one, fifty-two, fifty-one, fifty-eight on demonstrates a clear vision and makes decision based on what is best for students. And so that, that is clear and that, I would say those things did, um, come through in, in the focus groups as well, that, that people want a superintendent who is a visionary. Um, and certainly that makes decisions, um, always keeping in mind what's best for students. And then, um, building teams, that, that also came out. Um, people want, parents want to work, uh, they feel like they're working on a team, but administrators and teachers, uh, also notice this, it's a high percentage, fifty-three percent for the licensed staff, um, building teams. And, and again, that's not surprising. It's also not surprising that for students, that would be a little lower. The students probably don't think about that as often in terms of working with the superintendent. Then, uh, knowledge of curriculum instruction, learning transparency and decision-making was, came through right in the middle for everyone. But again, pretty high percentages for the staff, five, uh, uh, but it's forty-seven percent. And, um, uh, five also for parents. And then people skills, that, that was mentioned a lot in focus groups. I would say almost every focus group talked about people's skills, relationship building, um, warmth, sense of humor, interest in others. And then, um, there's the collaboration, open-minded and flexible. And I, I thought it was very interesting that that was number three for students at fifty-one percent, open-minded and flexible. So, um, and it's interesting, uh, it would be interesting to explore that a little bit more even with students of what, um, what that means to them. And, but certainly, um, the students enjoy having a superintendent that they know, that they feel understands them and their communities. And, um, and that, uh, open-minded and listening to students was something that came through in the focus group. Uh, budget is on there, proven experience in aligning district and school goals. And then I did add, um, a couple of things that students identified in their top ten, but, uh, the other groups did not. Values, innovation and creativity, which I thought was interesting coming from students and uses data for decision-making. Um, uh, was also interesting that the students identified that. So that, that is the end of, uh, we can actually go straight to the next page with the profile. And, um, the, the profile, and again, we'd probably only be able to see half of it at a time or so. But, um, uh, I, I hope you've had time to read through this. This is, um, a really important document to us. And you will see, um, if you read through the focus group results and then just thinking, uh, again about the survey. Really, these are not necessarily in order of importance. Um, but they are things that you'll see things that I've just talked about in terms of the surveys, but you'll also s- see things that were really, um, really reflective. Why we like, the reason we like focus groups so much is that we get a different context there. In the survey, they're choosing from a certain set number of items. And in the focus group, anything can come up and then we often have a theme emerge that isn't on the survey. That isn't something there. So, uh, just to kind of go through this quickly, demonstrating, again, strong interpersonal skills, positive relationships, that's important. Um, again, came up in every single focus group and was very high in the responses on the survey. Decisions based on what is best for students and values and voices of students. Uh, communicates a vision. Vision was maybe, uh, uh, one of the most common words in the focus group. People want someone with a sense of vision that can then inspire people to, to act and to act in alignment with that vision. Uh, communication came up in several different ways, both at a personal level, someone who communicates very effectively, person to person or with a group, but also who has skills in speaking and writing and, um, and, and, uh, is not afraid to use very different methods of communication, um, such as social media. Uh, working effectively with the board, uh, is, is something that people recognize as being extremely important for a superintendent to be successful. Is their ability to have a shared leadership role with the board. Um, values, collaboration, we, uh, again, that came up a lot. You saw that it was particularly important to staff and I would include administrators in that group also. Um, and building effective teams, again, with, um, collaboration, mentoring, clear communication, empowering others to develop. Um, strong relationships with local, state and, and, uh, regional leaders. It was noted that was, um, we heard frequently, uh, people were proud that Prentice, um, does that. And they want that to continue, that they feel that the district benefits by having those strong relationships with the center districts, the, um, local government leaders, but also connections to the state and even national government. Excuse me, to understand, um, what, uh, what's happening to maybe influence or to, uh, have our voices heard, but also to have the knowledge of what's, what's going on.
Um, Linda Yonkey.
Again, equity and diversity was important. Those, uh, uh, topics came up, both in terms of how we, uh, work with students, but also hi- in hiring and, um, trying to make our administrative and teaching staff more diverse. Um, those were things that were brought up. Again, it, it's, it was important to people, we heard this in the focus groups as well, that the superintendent really have a deep understanding of teaching and learning and curriculum. And that they don't have to have been an expert at this, but to have enough experience and to really understand those things in order to lead the district, um, was important. Uh, value, unique needs of every student and, uh, again, allocating resources to support students. Uh, fair-mindedness was a word that, that, uh, came up, that we, we were kind of struck by that word being emphasized. Fair, you know, that fair-mindedness is important, listening to both sides, uh, and empathy. And there was also discussion in a number of groups about that balance between self-confidence. We have to have someone who is confident, but that doesn't mean, um, they don't have humility, the ability to listen to other people, change their mind if they get new information, um, uh, but, but then be able to make a decision and, uh, lead, lead with that. Um, also there, in the focus groups, the uniqueness of each community was talked about a lot. And, um, uh, among parents and staff and students that the, the communities are different and a new superintendent is going to have to understand that, um, these are not identical high schools. They shouldn't be because they are reflections of different communities. And that, uh, the new superintendent needs to make, um, the presence known at each school as well and community. Um, understanding knowledge and skill in fiscal and legal matters is always important for a superintendent. It was mentioned a number of times, both on the survey and in focus groups. And then, um, the last bullet is certainly unique. I, I know Dave and I have never put anything like this, uh, on a profile before, but it was a, a topic, a big topic in every group, and that is understanding the deep and profound impact of the pandemic that we're experiencing on all constituencies, on students, teachers, parents, community. And then, uh, to develop plans to get us through this, you know, we know that this person won't be starting till next summer. There's still, you know, who knows where we will be exactly at that time. But even if everyone is, uh, it's full bore, back to school, um, with everyone, there are some, uh, tensions that have arisen because of disagreements or, or, um, issues with uh, decisions made this year and that this person needs to be a healer and bring people together, um, uh, when they start in the new position. So Dave, you want to, uh, any other remarks and?
Yeah, Pat, um.
Dave Clow.
I guess we're interested, uh, I guess, uh, just before, uh, I, I should mention how this profile gets used. Uh, Linda and I will use this document as we go out and recruit candidates. And as we do our interviews with candidates, our questions for candidates would come right off this profile. And then when we get farther in the process where the board is actually beginning, uh, their interviews and evaluation of candidates, uh, we'll be bringing this profile forth to help the board in the development of their questions, uh, for their interviews and also to use this as a guide as they're assessing the strength of the various candidates. So Pat, um.
Dave Clow.
You know, I, I, this isn't an action item, I don't believe, but we would like to know if the board would like to see some changes made on this. Do you think we've missed something? Do you not like how we've worded something? Um, I guess we want to go forth from here, knowing that either this document or a revised document, as we might, uh, take your suggestions, that, uh, that, that the board would be accepting that this is a profile that we'll go forward with.
Dave Clow.
So Pat, I'm kind of turning it back to you to, um, see if the board would like to make any revisions to this, to accept it as it is, uh, how we should proceed.
Okay, so let me throw it out to the group. Is there anybody that has any comments or suggested changes they'd like to make?
You know, I think, um, I just need a chance to review it. This is the first time I've seen this information. So I haven't formulated any opinion or had a chance to, um, come up with any clarifying questions or, um, I, I, I'd like, I'd like a, a chance to do that.
Sure.
Casey Rooney, School Board.
I agree, Lisa. Thank you. Um, I'd like a little bit of an opportunity to look through it. Um, and give you more feedback.
Jim Batson, VP.
I will make a comment that I, I, I think in general, I, I think it looks really, really well done. Uh, I was not so surprised, but, uh, eh, pleased to see sort of this, um, how so many of the, uh, the responses were sort of in sync. It sounds like there's a lot of, um, of, um, consistency in what people from all the different groups that you interviewed and surveyed and, and all the data that you've gathered. Um, so I think it's a, it's a stronger document because of that. If we had a, uh, you know, a, a lot of disagreement between, um, students, parents, uh, the various groups, I, I would be more concerned. But it really seems like there's, um, a lot of, um, um, you know, agreement on, on where we need to go and what, uh, this position should look like. So, thank you.
Pat Rudy, President.
All right, any other comments? Let me just look down the list to see who's there.
What does it look like if we take our time here? Um, how do we get back to you and say, yes, we like it or we have these clarifying questions? Do we have a timeline on that?
Pat Rudy, President.
I would think this week, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, if we could get that this week, that would be helpful. We're already doing recruiting, um, and, uh, you know, before too long, we'll actually be doing some consultant interviews with candidates. So, yeah, Pat, if, you know, if, if maybe people could get back to you.
Right.
Uh, and then you give us some word by the end of the week.
Yeah. So why don't, why doesn't everybody send me their comments? Um, I would say no later than Thursday. And then I can turn those around and get them back to Dave and Linda by Friday.
Okay.
Pat Rudy, President.
Uh, and so what I'll do is when I, when I get your comments, if it's something other than something very straightforward, I'll probably give you a call and talk about it. So we actually come to agreement on whatever it is we're going to do.
Hey, Pat, are you or Brian gonna send us this information?
And I, you know what? I honestly apologize. I thought you had it.
I did too. I, I'm always sorry about that.
In fact, I can send it to you while we're sitting here. Okay, so.
Well, that's my, that's probably my error. I honestly thought everybody had it.
So we are.
Frankis Lee, Superintendent.
I'm gonna send it to you right now.
Okay.
Kevin Huber, School Board.
Hey, this, Linda, Dave, this question, uh,
Based on the numbers, and I kind of echoed Jim's comments, it looks like everybody was kind of on the same page. Although I did see that staff was a little bit different, far different actually in a couple of the ending questions. Is that because the way the questions are worded? Because again, do you usually see that discrepancy among staff versus pretty much everybody else? And that, a lot of it focused on the kids, right? Most of us said, yeah, kids, kids, kids. And so it just, it was a little bit, it was a little bit weird. And I just wanted to see where the questions kind of written to listen back. Do you typically see that? Or is it just?
I think as an example, you know, the question, the closing, Steve, I think maybe the second question was one of the most different with the challenges and teachers identifying the focusing on the the needs of economically disadvantaged students and closing the achievement gap is not, I wouldn't expect a, you know, a big group of parents and students to identify that as an issue. And I'm not at all surprised that teachers would, would really be thinking about that a lot. And so I, it's not at all surprising because teacher, you think about the relationship between each of the groups to the superintendent. And parents in particular see a very public person and the communications they get are more formal. They see the superintendent, we hope, at things and hear from the superintendent often, but teachers work much more closely or more likely to deal directly, the superintendent's actions in selecting, you know, everything from, it just isn't at all surprising. Teachers have this different perspective of being in the classroom. And so these, don't surprise me at all. These goals don't surprise me at all.
Okay, yeah, I mean, again, because if we really want to look at it, there's three constituents, right? There's the kids. I mean, there's three, there's three parties we need to answer to, the kids, the teachers and the community. But I think we all, whoever's interviewed should say the kids are number one. I mean, if we don't, if we don't answer that question right, then we're pretty much in trouble, I think. And I was just worried, I don't know, I want to make sure that you guys saw all the data and things like that. I want to make sure that everybody, whether it was a parent, a board member, a teacher, a kid, we all got to that same, yeah, the kids are number one of those, of that pyramid. I mean, yes?
Yeah, I see a lot of consistency around that.
Okay.
Goals for the superintendent, characteristics that we're looking for, on what's best for students, those were all that, you know, very high on everyone's list.
Okay.
And also remember, I did three groups, the three biggest groups, and parents is 488 of that. There's not, there's not an equal representation here, so it's a little skewed toward parent responses. And then I don't have disaggregated, I didn't disaggregate the smaller groups of 44 support staff, 31 administrators, 60 community members. And, and so, but, but you have the list of all and see where that came out and it's, it's, this is something I've just started doing is disaggregating, and I just think it's interesting. And I did not see anything alarming or out of sync between, because of my knowledge of working with teachers and what they, their perspective, and then parents and students have slightly different perspectives too. And we saw students bringing up safety and that they're, they're they see the strength that the school is safe. And I think teachers here didn't even think to say that because it's so understood. And it's a very safe school. Clearly, people are happy there and, and feel good about the climate and environment, so.
Okay, no, great, thank you. Like I said, I didn't get it either, so once I look at it, if I have any for the comments, but thank you.
Sorry, sorry about that. I, we had.
Linda, that's probably my fault. And just to highlight that, one of the groups of teachers actually has a line in there on the strengths and attributes and says, students are at the center of all efforts with the district and the community. So I mean, I think that line in and of itself kind of speaks for itself.
Okay, good. Yeah, I just remembered the last two, Pat. The last two questions seemed to be really weird because it was like one and they were down like at six and it was like, it's quite a bit different.
And I think Dave and, if I could add, I think Dave and Linda, who both have very long careers themselves, there's an inherent belief among teachers that without, without having to say it, that students are at the top of the pyramid, right?
Yeah, right.
If you talk to any individual teacher, they will tell you it's all about kids. And so that's in Don Todd as well, that's such an inbred assumption and an operating philosophy that they just believe it's assumed, right? And so we go on from there because that's an assumption. So that's a great question.
Yeah, I also think it's interesting, you know, teachers know that if, if there is an ineffective superintendent, which you haven't had, and but that can really affect their jobs and, and that relationships, that person coming in and being able to give them a sense of security and freedom to do their best work is really important. So I think you see a little more like the question where the three goals for the superintendent, teachers first was relationships with staff and community. They know that you have to have a, you need a superintendent who relates well with the community and to the people who work in the district and the board. I would add in that with that as well, or it makes their, their work with students more challenging. So, anyway. Yeah, I welcome you to take a closer look at it. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them or.
Okay, so comments to me by, let's say, Monday, Thursday, and then I'll turn them out quickly and get them to Dave and Linda by Friday. Okay? All right, anything else?
No, just.
Yeah, but I think there's a lot of great stuff.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was a pleasure. All right, thanks.
Okay.
Hey, Pat, before we do public comment, just, you know, we've continued to refine what we put on the agenda, but you know, every meeting we'll read this just so people know how they get us public comment and how they're read. So we're clearer and clearer as we move forward. But on the agenda, we noted citizens may participate by providing written comment by email at the subject for public comment to publiccomment@D128.org by October 26 at 4:00 PM. Comments received after public posting of this board agenda until the Monday, October 26 4:00 PM submission deadline will be read in the order received by the Director of Communications. Public comment received after the submission deadline will be shared with all board members, although it will be read tonight. Okay? So just to clarify that, and we'll do that every meeting. That's a, that's a good, that's a good reminder for everyone.
Our first letter is from Sue Sarah. Hi all, I realize your decision to delay hybrid opening is based in the belief that our community is in danger. I am hopeful that this does not mean you will delay again and again and again till after spring break. We must learn to live with this virus and know that the viral load is less potent at this point. Perhaps, excuse me, members of the community that choose to stay home should have the choice, as already mentioned and established. More importantly, I am wondering why the district feels compelled to broadcast each and every case of COVID to the entire community. When you disclose a swim coach or a member of X sport, X school, it doesn't take people long to figure out who it is and shame them, treat them like criminals. It is absolutely awful what is going on out there on social media. How on earth does this sort of public outing of cases comply with HIPAA guidelines? I realize you are not giving out names and addresses, but enough info is being provided to have a lot of fingers pointed in their direction. This would be the same as if we started outing every single case of HPV, herpes, HIV and strep. The info you are providing is not helpful. It is the merchandising of fear. There is nothing productive that comes out of these e-blasts. If a student or teacher discloses a case to you, it should stay with you and allow that person to contact their network of people to notify them. How does this become info for public consumption when the case is completely irrelevant to thousands of people who have not been in contact with that person? I am hopeful you will reconsider your intentions moving forward to respect people's privacy and handle COVID cases on a much more personal and private manner. The COVID fear is enough to deal with. Let's not also make public COVID shaming a new norm for our community. As a side note, please check out this link below that explains the recent spike in cases. It is a false spike due to the unreliable antigen tests that dumped into the system. Here's the direct link. Thank you. I know this is brutally stressful for all of you. I do appreciate your time and consideration of all the moving parts that make up our COVID chaos. The next letter is from Garrett Self. Dear Board of Ed, if you read one article tomorrow, please read this one. This is not from some conservative, right wing op-ed page with an agenda. This is from The Gray Lady, the standard bearer as the paper of record for the US and certainly in left-leaning circles, The New York Times. Infectious disease expert after infectious disease expert in this piece cite the fact that schools are in fact not feeling the growth of virus spread. In fact, one expert from Boston University laments the fact that her children are not back in school. There is no denial of the virus's existence nor the increase in cases this fall at large in this and many other communities. What I do deny is the level of risk to our children and the continued inability of this deliberative body to get our students back into class, at least in a hybrid schedule. What I also insist upon is an absolute danger to their physical, mental, emotional, and yes, academic wellbeing from remote learning. The longer we wait, the more negative impact you are putting onto my child's development. Follow the science, you say? Follow the data, you ask? Well, here it is. Follow it, please. And he includes a link to the article from The New York Times. The next letter is from Lisa Black. Mr. Grudy and members of the school board, I am writing today to ask the board to support IASB Resolution 2 for Safe Gun Storage. Currently, Illinois' Safe Storage Law applies to children up to age 14, but should be raised to 18. With increasing instances of youth suicide, unintentional firearm shootings in the home and school shootings, this current legislation falls tragically short of protecting our children in schools. With more children home than ever before, along with a tremendous increase in firearm sales, we need to make sure minors don't have access to guns. As a former news reporter, I saw firsthand how often firearms lead to tragic consequences in homes, impulsive teens ended their lives or unintentionally injured or killed a sibling or best friend by handling their parents' firearms. In my current job, I review research regularly that concludes that shootings decrease in communities with tougher laws on gun storage. As Resolution 2 states, the majority of school shooters have a connection to the school and as many as 74% of shooters under the age of 18 obtained their weapon from their own home or the home of a relative. Reducing and removing youth access to firearms is a simple and effective way to prevent school gun violence. I want to address concerns that the resolution calls schools to act outside their lane. That simply is not true. Schools are responsible for the safety of students when the students are in their buildings. Schools have been pushed into this lane by having to harden their buildings and invest in school resource officers. Schools are in this lane when they are required to perform school shooter drills. Let's be proactive and prevent a shooter from entering the school in the first place by halting access to a firearm. Suicide is a second leading cause of death for youth between the ages of 10 and 24, and the rates are now at an all-time high. School districts have an important role to play in preventing youth suicide and raising awareness of the issue. Data shows us that most people who attempt suicide do not die unless they use a gun. The American Academy of Pediatrics and the Illinois Chapter of the AAP support safe gun storage. Please let me know if you would like me to provide you support links and letters to that that demonstrate their viewpoint. Like educators, doctors were told gun violence was not in their lane. Their response has been bold and clear. It is in their lane. It is in yours as well. Thank you. The next letter is from Kristen Christensen. D128 Board, I would like to give my sincere thanks and gratitude for the endless hours you have worked over the pandemic. As the board, you are supposed to represent students, parents and community. Please know that majority of this community wants to have a choice. Let those who want to stay home do so, but let those who want to go back to school go back. COVID is a virus that isn't going away and has a 99% survival rate. Why can't we stay? We can't stay in our houses forever. If we can go to the store or sit in a bar, we can have our kids go to school. We know how to protect ourselves and the safety protocol we need to follow. I beg you to please open our schools. We are falling further and further behind each day. These are days we cannot get back. Thanks. Next letter is from Alma Miranda. Dear D128 Board, it's October 26, 2020. Happy 219th day of the 14 days to flatten the curve. My high schooler has been without in-school instruction for months. These are her last precious days at VHS. My children are stressed. They see no end in sight of when they could possibly return to in-person instruction. The CDC says it is critical for schools to open as safely and as quickly as possible for in-person learning. It seems that the school board is only taking the guidelines of the Lake County Health Department into consideration. There are extensive examples of schools in the state, country and around the world that have opened safely. This virus is not going away. It is not disappearing in two weeks or anytime in the near future. The school will have to learn to mitigate the virus while still prioritizing in-school learning. It is clear that our kids are not okay being remote. Their last years as teenagers are being robbed due to the lockdowns. I understand there is a risk. According to the CDC in 2017, there were 2.8 million deaths in the United States. The leading cause of death was heart disease followed by malignant neoplasms and accidents with unintentional injuries. 647,457 people died of heart disease last year. What did District 128 do in 2017 to mitigate heart disease? After all, at the end of 2017, there would be 647,457 people who would die due to heart disease. Did the district shut down school immediately, then continue to keep it closed for months? Did they prohibit anyone from eating foods that contribute to high cholesterol? Did the district strictly enforce students to immediately change their lives to mitigate the number of deaths from heart disease? How did District 128 address the 599,108 deaths due to malignant neoplasms? In the same year, 55,672 people would die due to influenza and pneumonia. Did the district shut down the school for months in 2017 to prevent the US deaths of 55,672 people in that year? No, of course not. While the COVID-19 is a novel virus, it has a very high recovery rate and we have learned a lot since it hit our shores. Please see the stats for 2017 and 2016 from the National Vital Statistic Reports dated June 24, 2020, and follows the data that she refers to. In 2017, the leading cause of death in the United States for ages 10 to 24 were unintentional injuries followed by suicide and homicide. Did the district do anything to ensure no unintentional injuries occurred for the district's high school students? For current year, Week 42 IDPH shows a decrease in the percentage of influenza-like illness. According to the CDC, due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, this system will suspend this system will suspend data collection for the twenty 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 one influenza season. The evidence is clear that flu and COVID cases are combined in twenty twenty. This action will superficially inflate the COVID nineteen cases. If District one twenty eight is following these results, it would seem that cases of COVID nineteen have dramatically increased. I would urge District one twenty eight to consider this in your decision on the reopening of high schools. Since District one twenty eight has not closed for the flu in previous years, I would hope that given that much has been learned since COVID nineteen first appeared in our community, that as one of the leading high school districts in the country could find a way, I'm sorry, could find a safe way to open our schools as planned in the October twelfth meeting. Please continue to be the leader that I know the district is. Parents are behind you. Our kids are mentally disengaging and suffering. Please open their schools and allow kids to attend in person. And then she also includes two other charts that will be shared with you regarding influenza rates. I appreciate your time. And our last letter is from Robin Sherman.
Communications.
I am writing to express my support for the immediate return of all students and teachers to the classroom. This can be done safely as proven at many other local places of business and importantly, local schools like Saint Joe's, Caramel, and Oak Grove. The exorbitant property taxes we pay with a third of the money earmarked for District one twenty eight should be more than enough to afford P P E for every teacher, and it makes sense to supply it for them. Once that is done, all teachers must be back in the classroom, which is where most want to be. For those who refuse, for for those who refuse, must supply a medical note or find another job, like any place else with essential workers that is back in business. There is absolutely no basis in Illinois law, federal law, or the collective bargaining agreement that requires special exceptions or accommodations for this situation. So much decision making seems driven by the daily case numbers, which are riddled with false positives because asymptomatic people are foolishly being encouraged to test, sadly even by members of the board last week. Even filtering out the false positives, of of course, case counts will rise. This is a contagious respiratory illness, and it is fall in Illinois. That said, the disease may be more contagious, but it is far less deadly. The ratio of hospitalizations and deaths to positive tests is way down. Increasing community transmission is inevitable, but schools are not the vector. For those who favor shutting down everything, including the schools, the inescapable question is, do you think shutdowns actually stop the spread? Or do they just spread it across a longer timeline? The answer is, of course, the latter. Most of us will be exposed to this illness eventually, masks or not, shutdowns or not. There's no longer any compelling reason to keep the schools closed, and there are dozens of compelling reasons to open them. The teachers are more than adequately represented by their union. The union is obviously working hard to keep teachers out of the schools. It is not the Board of Education's charge to do the union's bidding. You work on behalf of the students. Do the right thing for them. Open the schools now. No more delays, no more excuses. We have heard for eight months about how much you want to open the schools. That is ringing increasingly hollow with each day that passes. If you truly meant it, you'd open both schools completely and immediately. That's it.
Mary, were there any other letters received like close to the deadline today?
No, there were none after four o'clock.
There were none after four o'clock. Okay.
The school board meeting will continue in a moment.
I think that's it, Pat.
Okay.
The school board meeting will continue in a moment.
All right, student school board reps.
Student school board rep.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna start with thoughts on e-school, then hand it off to Kayla. Okay, so right now especially, I have noticed a clear discrepancy in thought between e-school. Many students are very grateful that Wednesday has switched to a teacher directed day. Universally, though, the block schedule is still as popular as ever. Something interesting that I have heard is the love of physical education. Right now, it is more important than ever because many students are grateful to be forced to move because all they do is sit around all day, and it enables them to get off the computer and focus on themselves. I personally am an outdoor ed, and it's really nice to get outside and get off my computer uh because we get the opportunity to go to Independence Grove or any trail, hike, fish, bike, and do anything outdoorsy. Um, many students have acknowledged how fortunate we are for the resources, equipment, and the staff that we have. Obviously, online school isn't ideal. Many want to be back in the classroom, but due to the circumstances that we are in, District one twenty eight has provided the best online school experience. Office hours is very popular among students. Where that designated time allows them to have one on one time with their teacher to understand material better, go over their own tests or quizzes, or to go over anything they might have missed two days before. Office hours is also a good time where my club advisor set up meeting with exec board members because not everyone can do after school or before school, and office hours allows most people to be in those meetings as it's a universal time we all have off. A few students have expressed a want for more leniency and flexibility because it feels as though teachers aren't flexible with assignments. And right now, seniors are very stressed due to an excessive amount of homework and college applications being due in six days. Personally, the past two weeks have been the most stressful weeks I've had in so long because all my deadlines are Sunday, and having to finalize my essay is stressful on top of tests, quizzes, homework, and asynchronous work I have to complete. And then Kayla, do you want to go?
Student school board rep.
Yeah, my thoughts in e-school. I think things are going great, great, sorry. School is really good. I think I'm doing okay. Not as well as I hoped, but I'm still doing everything in my power to try my best. For example, office hours have been amazing help. I also think the asynchronous Wednesdays are great. They allow for a break, but you're still learning and doing work. Overall, I think e-school has been a blessing in disguise, being that I've gotten closer to my family, which is not always good, but it can be good in some other aspects. And I've also been able to work closely and meet some of the Libertyville board reps. Shout out to Marilyn and Amal.
Student school board rep.
Diego, you can go.
Everything that's been covered by Amal and Kayla regarding the pros and the upsides to e-learning, I fully agree with. Office hours, teacher availability, all of that is great, and I'd say by the month, things have gotten more efficient in terms of teachers being organized with assignments, um being really clear and concise with what they expect us to do and when things are going to be due. And I can only see that getting better from here on out. But since we, since they've already kind of jumped into e-learning, I wanted to talk about hybrid learning a bit. I could totally see where the board is coming from with all the decisions that have been made. And I have no real opinion, nor do I feel qualified on giving an opinion as to the merit of those decisions. But respectfully, I also see as a student where all these concerns from parents are coming from and from a lot of my peers, and also see the merit behind possibly going back and bringing that process to the forefront in terms of priorities. But I wanted to lead that into talking about how there is so much polarization going on right now between the student body. I've never seen it like this. I mean, it gets bad around the Super Bowl too and stuff, but it's it's really not the same as it is right now. It's it's um a big e-learning versus hybrid learning war of sorts, especially on social media. And it's very much labeled as an us and them sort of thing with a great majority leaning towards the e-learning side, which is to be expected. And again, I don't, I I basically just want to alert the board that if there's any way to issue further statements to the student body at each of our respective sister schools, that we're all part of the same student body, that we're all D one twenty eight, that there's no need to go online and, you know, leave hate messages towards other kids because they disagree on a political stance regarding going back to school. There's no reason to ridicule others, name call them, because a lot of that, a lot of that's been going on. And, you know, that shouldn't be the case. There should be more of a civilized discussion regarding e-learning and hybrid learning. So it's really just gotten out of hand. That's only concern that I have with it and comment I wanted to make. I'm gonna hand it off to Quinn now.
Student school board rep.
Thanks, Diego. Um, I just wanted to emphasize my support for going back to school. You know, I think the teachers and staff are doing the best they can and doing a very good job of having school online. But I just want to underline the importance of, you know, seeing friends at school. And like, I just know personally, I learned so much better in a classroom than I do on the computer. And so, I mean, that's the basis of what I wanted to say. I just wanted to emphasize that I think we should be back in school. And I know a lot of my friends and teammates feel the same way at Libertyville.
Student school board rep.
Okay, I'm gonna continue to talk about division between student body like that Diego started. So I'm just gonna say that the student body throughout both districts, as Diego was saying, is very divided right now. Like, we see various examples of students like adults fighting with one another over social media platforms. Some students are drawn into it, into this, others just ignore it. Obviously, this, well, this deep division began with politics in regards to the current election between Trump and Biden. And although right now political division is deep, vocal, and intense, it's being further deepened by the pandemic. Should we go back now, or should we wait till second semester? It's united across the board that we all would like to go back to school and see our classmates and teachers. The division is between whether we should or should not. Right now, the divide is too deep to quickly re-mend, but unitedness is needed through our current conditions. To the public, all students are aware of the aggressiveness coming from parents and community members, whether that's over social media or through the reading of public comments. I just wanted to say that that is upsetting. When we argue about topics at school, our teachers constantly challenge us to engage in respectful debate and refrain from hurtful or personal comments. And as students, we humbly ask you to do the same. And as a student board representative, I am here to represent all students. It's hard to represent all students, though, when everyone is completely split. But as an individual, I'm aware that we have hit new peaks of COVID infections, and therefore I'm aware we have to do better to help prevent the spread. Since I want to go back to school, I've got to be sure my actions align with my words, and I need to commit to getting tested and being honest if I show symptoms. I'm encouraging my friends to do the same. Like Mrs. Hustle said, it should be everyone against COVID, and I hope we can all work towards that. Does anyone have anything else, or should I get into the report?
Uh, I want to add on to divisions as well. And to totally, to start off, I totally agree with Amal. There's been many divisions under school between politics and deciding between hybrid and e-school. But the upcoming election divisions within our school will increase. I hope that when we continue with e-school and start hybrid, V H H S student body will find a way to stay united because we are stronger together. Now, Marilyn, go talk about your thoughts.
Student school board rep.
Yeah, I just wanted to go off from Diego about thoughts on hybrid. Personally, I can't speak for the whole student body, but I really respect the board for working day and night on this. I know that these decisions don't come easily. And as for my thoughts on hybrid, I think that if we were to go back, I do support and respect the fact that students have a choice to go back or not. So the people who do want to, they can. And people who are more hesitant of COVID, they can just stay home. But I think like the first step we need to take if we want to go back is getting everyone tested. I think the least we can do is making sure the majority of our student body is negative when they go back, even if we can't have continued testing. Another issue I've seen or that's been brought up about the November twelfth date is that Thanksgiving break is less than two weeks after that, and people will be traveling. So that provides more concerns about COVID. If people are traveling, then people are more exposed. And if we go back right after Thanksgiving break, we're making the process more complicated by adding another layer of testing. And the same goes for winter break. So that's all.
Student school board rep.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna talk about, just read the Libertyville board, the student report. So Homecoming Month has been going on all of October. On October tenth, Student Council held the drive through parade, a spin on the traditional homecoming parade. Instead of LHS Sports Clubs and Fine Arts driving through downtown Libertyville on floats, it was flipped. Community members were able to drive through LHS campus while waving to LHS students stationed at different parts of the campus. It was so encouraging and uplifting to see so many Libertyville community members come together through this type of adversity and continue Libertyville homecoming tradition safely. Senior Rowan Hornsey states that we are working on uniting students as safely as possible to close out our Homecoming Month. We are looking to plan events around a canned food drive to keep that event especially, to keep that event especially with how relevant and important it is this year with many residents experiencing hardships that haven't ever before. On Friday, October twenty third, Student Ambassadors hosted an orientation for transfer and new students to Libertyville High School community. The new students were given a tour of the school as well as being able to walk their schedule. They were able to receive insight about how the hybrid model would work and were able to ask questions freely. Throughout the school year, Interact has been staying active in aiding and volunteering within our community. Two weeks ago, Interact participated in a trash cleanup around Butler Lake, as well as making letters for the elderly in the Spring Meadows home. The Chosen Principals Advisory Board had their first meeting with Dr. K. They gave teachers and admin students perspective on the current school climate, as well as ideas on how to make the first day of in person school welcoming. Debate had their first conference this past Saturday. Congrats to all who won awards.
Student school board rep. Student school board rep.
All right, to start off with athletics, just an overview. Uh, most of the sports that are playing in the fall currently are finished or near finishing, and All State Finals were unfortunately canceled for those athletes. And teams training in the fall as their offseason are ending soon as well, as most of the teams are hitting their allotted limit for contact days given by the state. Um, also, most winter sports are resuming November fifteenth, you know, give or take a day or two. And most spring sports are February fifteenth. Um, currently, we have boys cross country running. They won regionals on Saturday, and they have sectionals this weekend, and we have seven runners competing this weekend. Additionally, after that race, the girls are running as well, and we have eight girls running in that race. We have soccer, basketball, baseball, football, wrestling, lacrosse, cheer, and palms, all training in the offseason right now, and they're practicing anywhere between one and three days a week. But unfortunately, those are coming to an end this week or next week. And sports that have finished up are girls tennis and boys golf. And in girls tennis, we placed second in sectionals, and we had one golfer go to sectionals who placed forty sixth out of sixty three. Under academics, uh, in the CRC, Ms. Bellstrom and Mrs. Cardenail have been working very hard to accommodate for all seniors with their early application deadlines coming up this weekend. Uh, they have provided seniors with part day or all day help using CRC Zoom link calls. AP signups are coming up. Uh, this Friday is the deadline for all students to pay for the AP testing without the late fee. In order to avoid that late fee, all AP students, please pay for your AP test before then. Uh, for Drops of Ink, last Wednesday, Drops of Ink released their October issue regarding divisiveness. And social media editor Lily Hieronymus stated that they feel as though DOI did a great job enhancing and elaborating on the October cycle of divisiveness with, without um increasing any divisiveness within the student body. Although we talked about political divisiveness, we were able to incorporate a wide range of topics. And the new DOI will be mailed out next week, but is currently online. Um, for the PSAT, on October fourteenth, juniors went back into school to take the PSAT. And after speaking with a few juniors, um, they have all said it was a relief to see everyone happy and healthy and in person. Uh, Principal's Day was October twenty third. So thank you, Dr. K and Dr. G, for all the hard work you do and your dedication to the students.
Student school board rep.
All right, Marilyn, go ahead.
Okay, moving on to fine arts, for band, as of Tuesday, October thirteenth, Wind Ensemble has been going back to school on Tuesdays and Thursdays for in person rehearsals, and the band was split into two groups with half attending on Tuesday and the other half attending on Thursday. And the students were spaced out with green tape boxes on the floor, and the band also takes a ten minute break within thirty minute rehearsals. They wear masks while playing, which poses some difficulties with instruments such as the flute. And for remote students, Mr. Gore has a camera setup in the front of the band room, and they are muted, but they play along with the band in different pieces at home. And personally, as a Wind Ensemble student, I chose to stay remote, but I can say that staying at home, it is effective because I can still hear the band and I play along with them at home. And Senior Jonathan Zhang says that it's nice to finally be back together to rehearse in person and that he missed a lot of people, but also comments that as he walks around in the hallways, he feels awkward and uncomfortable, and it feels too unusual and nothing similar to a regular school experience. As with orchestras and where it's a band they've been going back, and Senior Ally Gifford says that she looks forward to it every week because it's so much better than playing by yourself in your room. And moving on to theater, the Spring Musical this year has been announced to be Shrek, and many of the theater students are very excited for the possibility of having a large production. Stevenson High School is doing their musical outside, and they're filming the production while other schools do a drive through show. And there are usually around a hundred or so students that are involved in the play, and this is the largest event for stage players for the whole year. Senior Rachel Erdman says that we know many sports were able to be in person this fall, and we would love to follow in their footsteps. For Rachel, musical theater is her planned career path, and without experiences like the plays and musicals, it's very difficult to gain the base of training that she would need to pursue this path in college. As of now, it's hard to say the path of this play because nothing has been approved, but we are looking forward to whatever the spring brings for the play, whether it be a live stream, pre-recorded, or an outdoor event. For arts, some students in AP portfolio have been going back to school for the past two weeks. In the beginning, art students had to request supplies and pick them up if they needed the school's materials. And for people with focus on ceramics, jewelry, or glass, it was And for people with focus on ceramics, jewelry or glass, it was more difficult to get access to materials such as glaze and kilns. And since they've gone back, students go in twice a week during second period to work. Senior Avery Bang says it's great to be back in an art setting and being able to get critiques while I'm working and feed off of everyone's creativity again. Everyone has their own table, that is their own space and contact is limited within students. Also, Mrs. Johnson worked very hard to make sure there was enough room and space to organize all the supplies, so thank you to her. Um, however, once the school opens for hybrid, Avery comments that the art classes will end up losing their individual space because the ceramics, jewelry and glass classes will be using the same tables during different periods, meaning students would have to clean up everything before they left class. Choir has also been going back similar to band and orchestra and the guidelines with social distancing follow the same direction as band. About twenty students are in each group and at home, students are either singing along on Zoom or completing other assignments. Choir students have said it's nice singing in group because learning music via Zoom can be hard. And senior Mia Vernasco says that going back in person for choir has helped immensely. Due to being online, she could never hear her notes from the whole choir, so she wouldn't know if she was singing the wrong thing. Since she's been able to go back, she's been able to figure out what she's doing wrong and understand the music more. And that's all for the Libertyville Board Report and I'll turn it over to Diego and Kayla.
Student, school board rep.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. VHHS Student Council is working hard to keep the student body united and active through virtual activities and events. Instead of holding the homecoming week, VHHS held Home Staying Week, which was a successful event even though it hasn't been done before. For the first time ever, this year's homecoming core only features senior students. They were voted in by teachers and students, the twelve students selected homecoming core were students who embody cougar pride in both words and actions, positive energy and can be seen competing on the field, cheering in the stands or acting on the stage. Each year, VHHS holds a lip sync battle. This year featured three senior dance groups and a special teacher dance who practiced persistently to nail their routines. Their routines were performed on the football field and recorded so that they can be watched virtually. Shout-outs to the imposters, the winning senior dance group led by Pala Papano and Penzamas. I also wanted to give a special shout-out to Dr. Gilliam for his amazing job in the staff lip sync dance. It was very entertaining to say the least. To continue the homecoming week tradition, every day was a different year day, from pajama day to hat day and college year day. It all led up to Friday's class color competition. Through the VHSTUCA Instagram account, students were able to see pictures of students and staff participating. Even though we aren't together, it's still nice to see everyone participate. Lastly, during Home Staying Week, students have the opportunity to be entered into a raffle to win free lunches on the Vernon Hills Student Council Instagram page. They needed to post a photo and tag VHSTUCA demonstrating that they were participating in the spirit week. Each day, one person would win a free lunch. With the change in start date for hybrid learning, I would like to thank the teachers for being readily available and clear with their instructions. Many teachers have found different ways to disperse information to students and utilize Google Classroom. From a student perspective, this has been very helpful. I know that, I know what my teachers expected me and I know that my teachers are there to support me by using office hours and having their emails always open. Principal's Day was last week. On behalf of the VH Board Reps, we would like to thank Dr. G and Dr. K for everything that they've done. Being a principal is hard, but they sure are good at it. I know that the students and staff feel the same way. AP testing, for the second year in a row, AP students are being asked to sign up for AP testing in the fall instead of the spring. We have students who are reminded to have our AP classes registered in the College Board website by this Friday or else there'll be a forty-dollar late fee. You can register in the My AP platform with your teacher's codes and pay through the AP total registration link. VHHS College Resources has done a great job making sure that the seniors are on track by catching us up with what we need to do and reminding us of our due dates. Many students have said that through the help of Mrs. Rollick, Ms. Belido, Ms. Wenfis, the college administration process has been less stressful. And NHS also held a food drive on October third, knows its success. To donate food, there are options to have your food picked up on your front porch by an NHS member or to drop your food off at school. We had donations from community members, school staffs, students, the entire cross-country team. Through the food drive, we were able to restock the VHHS food pantry and fill the entirety of the room within fifteen, sixteen, which is about twenty carts full of goods. Thank you for everyone that contributed.
Alright, now it's me. I'll try to be as concise with this as possible to be mindful of everyone's time. So Vernon Hills offered free community COVID-nineteen testing at the V-HAC on October twenty-second. Dr. G and, or both Dr. Gs were the first two to get tested with four hundred-plus people following after them. There were two lines for vehicles with health officials coming window to window throughout the line, providing paperwork to register to receive your results and get tested. My dad and I were within the first twenty cars on our side. There were two lines, like I said, and we saw the whole process. While it being a bit lengthy overall, it was as efficient as it could have been and overall could be categorized as a major success. It was cold and it was rainy, so a special shout-out goes out to those administering the tests throughout the morning that could not have been easy and we all should be very grateful for them helping with that. I got my call yesterday with my results and was really pleased with how quick that came in. Again, everything was super efficient and the next rounds of testing that are performed on our school grounds should be efficient as well. In terms of construction, as we get approval to make use of the newly constructed spaces, many of those spaces are in the process of being adapted or many previous spaces are in the process of being adapted to the potential hybrid learning setup. Uh, the new cafeteria is now spilled with individual, individual student desks. Such precautions are key to maintaining a safe learning environment. The hallway and stairwells are all divided in half with directional walking on the right side, social distancing guidelines and reminders put up everywhere. Classrooms are looking very different as well, with desk space six feet apart and teacher spaces clearly defined and set aside. Signs are posted throughout the building reminding students to wash their hands, wear masks and stay socially distanced. Now moving on to fine arts, choir will be releasing a song using Soundtrap, a program I mentioned at the last board meeting, which is like the Google Docs of digital audio workstations allowing recorded collabs with editing options to happen in real-time. Super innovative stuff and it's really exciting to work with. Theater will be streaming fall radio plays throughout the weekend, bringing two full audio dramas free of charge. The two shows include Thirty-Nine Steps directed by Mrs. Freikels and Count Dante and the Great Chicago Dojo War directed by Olivia Kandosha. All the orchestra and band ensembles have been well-engaged and busy with music theory assignments, history lessons and playing opportunities via Practice First. A program that records your playing lined up to the score of your piece and gives you immediate feedback on tempo, rhythm and pitch in real-time. Multiple ensembles are also engaging in chamber music projects, recording quartets and quintets via Soundtrap like I mentioned the choir was doing earlier. Those projects should be released in the near future, so definitely check them out. In terms of art, some of Miss Malloy's AP portfolio artists and students in art exploration and drawing and painting contributed original artwork to be published in an activity book being printed to sell as a fundraiser for a new subdivision playground in Antioch. Upon selling these activity, or these Halloween activity and coloring books, all proceeds will go towards constructing that new playground, which is a great community initiative. And moving on to clubs, they've been starting up well, everything's going very smoothly and there's been a lot of participation overall. International Club is doing trivia every other, every other week. Future Medical Professionals of America have had, have a guest speaker coming in on Thursday and have had multiple meetings going already. JSA has been going strong with great attendance in weekly meetings and lots of member participation. One thing that's actually been tough for JSA is not being allowed to attend conventions. Uh, our, our whole chapter missed out on digital Fall Day over Zoom and our beloved Fall State as well due to safety concerns over possible mishaps happening on Zoom. That being said, the JSA organization on the Midwest level could be more clear with their security protocols and I understand where school officials are coming from, playing it safe. But I'll state for the record that both these events went smoothly without zero faults. But there's one thing I want to bring up to the board about in case other school organizations have been facing similar problems, is to please consider the balance between preventing students from having these valuable online experiences and the balance between considering possible Zoom bombings and issues online there. These are basically our meets, our sporting events and our conventions. If things are being allowed to happen in person for sports, um, it's fairly difficult to see why clubs wouldn't be allowed to participate on something online via Zoom. And then finally tying things up with athletics, girls cross-country CSL champs, runner-up for regionals, they're on a sectionals this weekend, girls golf. Lexi Schulman has been killing it, regional champ and runner-up in sectional championship. Girls swim CSL champs, they unfortunately did lose the opportunity to move on to sectionals due to that COVID incident, but hopes are running high for the future. Contact days have been winding down overall, successful with very few COVID interruptions. And then coaches appreciation in the fall is usually an event organized by the parent boosters. This year, uh, the generous food spread was converted and replaced with yard signs, cougar polo shirts and yard, and, um, overall, social media and acknowledgement. And then the McHenry Bocchi Invitational was a great success with VH having three first-place winners. Uh, that'll be all. Thank you.
Alright, great job everybody. Thank you very much. The only thing I'll add in the president's report, I just wanna piggyback on what Diego said. Uh, last week, Wednesday, Thursday, we had our two days of COVID testing. Um, so as Diego said, we did four hundred, uh, plus samples at Vernon Hills on Thursday. Uh, we also did, uh, a little over four hundred samples at, uh, Libertyville High School on Wednesday. So I wanna just say thank you very much to all those who helped, uh, and volunteered, um, in those two days. It was a wonderful, uh, showing. Um, from what I heard from the people that actually worked the site, from, uh, the vendor that works for IDPH, they said it was a record both days uh, for a mobile site, so it was a lot of hard work, but, uh, but well done. Um, I do wanna emphasize to those who, uh, have made comments about why we did that testing, actually some data does show that over fifty percent of uh, COVID cases were from asymptomatic spreaders. Um, and so that's why it is important to find those asymptomatic cases um, in the population in order to try to mitigate the community spread of the virus. So, um, that was the reason I got tested, uh, and I know that's the reason why several others got tested as well. Okay? Um, so with that, I just wanna flip back to Mary. Mary, do we have that letter?
Yeah, Pat, just, just a comment. Uh, we have one more letter that, uh, was actually in spam. It was signed by a number of, uh, people, I think around a hundred and twenty people. So we wanna make sure that, uh, we read that letter, uh, into the record tonight. Uh, and, um, uh, many of you will recall earlier, maybe, uh, meeting or two ago that, uh, we received a letter from, um, District one twenty-eight teachers that was signed by a number of people. Uh, and I believe we actually read all those names into the record. So, uh, I would suggest, uh, for consistency's sake, that, uh, we do the same thing tonight. And then if we need to limit that practice in the future, then we can simply, um, make sure the board has uh, the letter with all the names on it, uh, regardless of who it comes from, uh, in the future moving forward. That would be my suggestion and recommendation at this point, just to be fair and consistent.
Yep, that sounds good. Thanks.
Okay, we all good? Can I see the board members nod their heads if they're good with that? Okay. Alright, Mary, we'll turn it back to you.
Hey, dear members of the D-one-twenty-eight board, you are seriously harming our kids. While we all know it is not your intent and you are good people doing your best in a very difficult situation, your collective decisions since March are having disastrous consequences. By making COVID safety the entire focus of your calculus, you are missing the significant harm your decisions are causing. The unnecessary and far-too-prolonged closure of the schools is having real everyday impact to our kids. But you are not giving these terrible results sufficient weight. Our kids are experiencing depression, suicidal ideation, frustration and untold anger. They are experiencing diminished social skills and compromised social intelligence acquisitions. For some kids, the safest and healthiest part of their day used to be the seven hours in school. Now locked up at home watching a box for hours, some have prolonged exposure to abuse, neglect and poor nutrition. Our kids are moving far less, so atrophy, poor posture and low motivation are setting in for many. Daytime drug, alcohol and vaping abuse are growing outside the protective walls of the school. Some parents prefer not to think about such things, but they are clearly occurring. None of this damage has to happen any longer. Open the schools. The teachers can be protected. Teachers are essential workers, most of whom want to go back to doing what they love, inspiring kids face-to-face in a classroom. The students are at very low risk from COVID to start with. Masks and distancing in school further diminish their minimal risk. In the schools, if the schools open, students will be required to social distance and wear masks. Most students do neither when interacting in their private lives, making them safer in school because so many interact in person during the school day. One might ask, what enables them to interact face-to-face during the school days? Asynchronous learning, shorter days, long breaks and so many classes that spontaneously end early all the time. The learning experience last spring was called less than ideal. The learning experience now is completely unacceptable. Its collateral damage is unconscionable. Fear and irrationality have controlled our society and the majority of this board long enough. Please end this now. Your mission is to put the safety, welfare and success of the students above all else. Please stick to your mission and open the schools. This can be done safely, this can be done completely, this must be done immediately. Thank you for your consideration. One hundred and twenty-two parents from District one twenty-eight. Victor Gomez, Amy Gomez, Nicole Noonan, Brian Noonan, Tina Nobby, Maggie Loesch, Fred Loesch, Ashley Wasser, Danielle Gavrick, Maine Gavrick, Callie Johnson, Mark Johnson, Dale Sherman, Robin Sherman, Michelle Holmes, Lee Gimbert, Mark Gimbert, Brian Loesch, Michelle Loesch, Alma Miranda, Justin Trutalar, Katrina Trutalar, Mike Maza, Holly Maza, Jen Slago, Mike Slago, Heather Zarnetsky, Scott Zarnetsky, Stacy Christensen, Amy Farmer, Tim Farmer, Kelly Uppers, Jerry Coopers, Alma Gomez, Camille Simpson, Monique Simpson, Emily Mayhew, Sean Mayhew, Stephanie Brown, Kim Bissing, Joe Bissing, Gregory Coronas M.D., Anne DeFranco, Jill Basic, Adrian Basic, Lisa Hanigan, Mindy Warren, Kristen Christensen, Carla Burke, Randy Burke, Kelly Williams, Sarah Tomlinson, Brooke Dawes, Snowden, Zastro, Karen Koontz, Mark Koontz, Dan Hill, Jamie Hill, David Hutchins, Jennifer Hutchins, Brad Ulrich, Aaron Ulrich, Ted Hanigan, Whitney Delores, Doug Delores, Gina Leozzo, Cliff Breslow, Kim Smith, Susan Brooks, Ryan Brooks, Liz Howard, Chris Howard, Bill Bruckner, Liz Bruckner, Kim Smith, Kathy Rankin, J.C. Holmes, Tara DeRosa, Whitney Delores, Colleen Montgomery, Amy Heblin, Catherine Silverman, Mary Catapan, Sue Sarah, Craig Wyke, Michelle Hauser, Stacy Wyke, Julie Towne, Brandy Bennett, Samuel Gilli, Bridget Watson, Kristen Bradford, Nicole Gay, Kevin Scott, Kim Comsinger, Kyle Martin, Lori Maribella, Kim Eckrot, Doug Eckrot, Ian Cajun, Lindsay Kirian, Sean Gay, D-one-twenty-eight candidate, Jeff Frans, Chelsea Pederit, Scott Pederit, Kristy Nollenberg, Bill Watson, Elise Mann, Dana Wells, Ryan Wells, Barbara Cannon, Tony McCorm, excuse me, McCormally, Laura McCormally, Keith O'Connell, Sarah O'Connell, Lori Foster, Sherry Budziak, Lynn Patterson, Kevin Patterson, Stephen Saint Louis, David Fink, Angela Lutz, Cliff Hieronymus and Amy Hieronymus.
Okay. Thanks, Mary. Alright, superintendent's report.
Okay, Pat, uh, good evening to, uh, the board and, uh, the administrators and especially our students and our, uh, parents and community members watching, uh, tonight. Uh, we are really pleased, uh, to announce some news that, uh, we've all already put out in the community, but we need to stop, uh, for a second and do that recognition publicly together, uh, because everyone has contributed in this. Niche.com and nationally recognized K-12 school district and college ranking service recently released its two thousand twenty-one K-12 school rankings. D-one-two-eight received the number three best school district in America ranking and the number two best school district in Illinois ranking. In addition, D-one-two-eight also received the following rankings. On a national level, number one safest school district in America. On a national level, number one safest school district in America, number three best places to teach in America, and number 10 districts with best teachers in America. In Illinois, uh also number one safest school district in Illinois, number three best places to teach in Illinois, number five districts with best teachers in Illinois. And I'll just make a comment that uh I think this is the fifth year that we've been in the top uh three. We've ranged all three of those spots. Again, uh well over 11,000 school districts in the United States. Um, and this has uh really been a 25-year journey. We've been ongoing back in Dave Klupf's time, uh who you met uh earlier tonight. Uh, and it's a collective effort of uh certainly our um wonderful students, our teachers and support staff, our administrative leaders, uh the school board, our parents, and uh our tremendously supportive community. So uh congratulations to everyone. Uh, it's quite an honor uh to be ranked uh again among that elite um number of school districts uh in the United States. Uh, but what's most important about that recognition is what it represents. Um, niche.com uh uses a number of data sources, uh and they also take real feedback from um students and parents and uh teachers um in terms of compiling their national rankings. So uh congratulations to everyone. Uh, it's a great honor for the district and uh happy to report that wonderful news tonight. Uh, and one of the reasons we have such a great district is our two uh really outstanding world-class principals. And uh you may be aware that the month of October is recognized nationally as National Principals Month. In October, uh Principal's Appreciation uh Day was last Friday, October 23rd. We all sent Tom and John uh a thumbs up, and uh I see they got uh many wonderful comments on the district's Facebook site. But uh their excellent leadership, supportive of our students and staff, and focus on our daring mission are appreciated every day and especially uh during these challenging uh COVID-19 uh times. Their work with the staff on remote learning to get the buildings uh ready for return hybrid uh is nothing short of extraordinary. And I will tell you, as someone who sat in Tom and John's chair for 13 years um and knows as a superintendent, uh the most two and most two important people in the district um are our two high school principals because they make it go. And we do everything we do uh so they can do what they do at the building directly with staff and of course our amazing students. So Tom and John, I think, how about we just, I'll give you a big thumbs up here. Thank you for being you.
Prentice Lee Superintendent.
Okay, to continue with good news tonight, the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, GFOA, has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to Community High School District 128 for its Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFFER, for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019. The CAFFER has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFFER. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government agency and its management. So Dan, uh congratulations and thanks to you and your team. Another thumbs up for you. Great job. Really good work.
Prentice Lee Superintendent.
Um, next, VHS 2012 graduate Kate Lee was named 2021 Early Career Educator of the Year by the Illinois State Board of Education. The award is given to a teacher with one to four years of teaching experience. Kate is the the director of choirs at Maine East High School in nearby Park Ridge. And uh I'm happy to let you all know, particularly the board reps, that Kate Lee sat exactly where you are sitting tonight, and look what she has done. So um as always, um Kate was amazing, and so it's really great for her to get that recognition. And finally, tonight, Twin Orchard hosted the Mid-America Junior Golf uh Tour Autumn Open this weekend on uh the lake course um at um that particular location for juniors ages 12 to 18. In the girls division, Lexi Schillman from Vernon Hills shot rounds of 77 and 75 for 152, which was four over par, to capture the title by four shots. So congratulations to um Lexi. And uh Pat, I think uh that concludes the good news tonight. Uh, next, um we'll turn it over to Dan and Mark to do a review of where we're at in our ongoing major capital projects work.
Mark Copey, BMG.
Uh, thank you, Prentice. Uh, work is moving forward in the at Vernon Hills in the um classroom addition and in the cafeteria expansion. Uh, we're working uh on all the punchless items in both of those areas. The work is continuing over in the dance studio and the gym. Uh, basketball hoops are up. Um, the dance studio and the the gym areas are mostly painted. Um, so we're looking forward to installing the floors in both the dance studio and in the gym here in the near future. Um, up on the V hack, uh the girls' softball infield uh uh installation um postponed a little due to weather the last few days. Uh, they have started installing the turf. Um, everything's prepped for um the asphalt replacement around the batting cages in that area. So uh expected completion in the next couple of weeks, uh depending on uh weather. And that concludes the update on the capital projects.
Okay, Dan, anything for you to add to Mark's report? Okay, well, that was short and sweet. Thank you, uh both of you. Uh, next on the agenda tonight, the Superintendent's Report is school reopening. Um, we had an extensive conversation about uh metrics last week at our emergency board meeting. So I'm going to turn it over to Pat at this point, uh who's been uh monitoring and reviewing data. So uh Pat, I'll turn this part over to you.
Okay. All right, Brian, you gonna show the slides, sir?
Pat Grudy, President.
All right, so as many of you may know, there's been a a lag in reporting of data on the Lake County website, but they did update some data uh late this afternoon. So this shows the latest data for Libertyville in terms of the incidence rates. Uh, Libertyville did trip the um the zones from hybrid to remote. There are now eight consecutive days across the uh 1.4 threshold. Um, and uh looking at a different database, uh which is published by the Daily Herald, it looks like they will likely remain above that hybrid threshold here for at least the next uh couple of days. Um, I know some people believe that this jump in the uh number of cases is due to the antigen testing or the fact that testing overall has increased. Um, that may in fact be partially the case. Um, but if you look at the the testing in October and compare the testing to September, um so far this month in October, we've had 122 new cases reported in Libertyville uh as compared to 70 cases in the month of September. So that represents a 40% um, I'm sorry, that that represents almost a doubling in the number of cases if you look at the case rate per day from 2.33 in September to about 4.69 in October. In that same period of time, uh the testing has increased about 40%. Um, so the cases are increasing at about two times the uh the increase in the number of tests performed. Um, so really, both factors, I think, are driving that increase. So we're going to continue to monitor this. Uh, we don't have any plans tonight to make any changes to our our current plan, which is to open up on November 12th. Um, but we're still hoping that we see some more favorable data over the next week or so um in Libertyville. In addition, on the next slide, you'll see also Libertyville has um been spiking slightly on the positivity rate. They're now just under that 5% threshold set by IDPH. Um, so uh they've been trending upwards. Again, we're hoping over the next couple of days, we start to see that um come back down again. And then Vernon Hills, we won't spend a lot of time on this. Um, the same two metrics for Vernon Hills actually continue to uh trend. Uh, in the case of the incidence rate, continue to trend in the hybrid zone. And in the case of the testing positivity rate, um they're also uh trending below the 5% line on the next slide. All right, so that's the update. That only includes data through 10/24. Um, so I expect that IDPH and Lake County will be updating their data here um over the next couple of days. All right, I will mention, I forgot to mention in my other report, though, there is one other chance for people to get tested. I know one of the students mentioned, you know, all students should get tested. On October 31st, which is this Saturday, uh we will be doing another mobile testing event um with IDPH and Lake County Public Health. All right, so that's what I, that's what we know so far in the metrics.
Okay, so Pat, just to reinforce a couple of things. So uh the board decision to bring students back on November 12th is still the decision.
Correct.
So there's been no um other decision made by the board or the administration or the board and the administration uh together, so that's important to know. Uh, the other thing to know is that we are still pursuing um several leads in terms of some ongoing uh ongoing diagnostic uh testing for um students and staff uh that may be value valuable to us to monitoring and contact tracing down the line. And although we don't have anything um tangible to report out tonight, we're continuing to investigate uh those possibilities um, you know, in the metro, in the Chicago metro area um as uh we do get started at some point. Pat, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that, but.
Uh, you know, we can just add that, you know, among the things we are considering is um the possibility of doing more what we'll call intake testing. Uh, but more importantly than that, at a minimum, uh doing something to improve the testing for any symptomatic people we identify and any people that may be um quarantined because of the need uh as a result of any contact tracing that's done. Um, one of the things I think we have learned, although some of us have gotten our results from last week, uh I, for example, have not. Uh, so I got tested on Thursday, so I'm Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. I'm four full days into it without results. Um, if we want to do a good job of contact tracing and quarantining people and and not having people out too long, we need to do better than that. Um, so we're we're looking into options for improving that as well as the possibility later this year, maybe next year, of implementing routine screening um of students and staff where where we where we feel that's feasible. Um, so stay tuned. Those are active discussions. We've got at least three different leads that we're we're chasing right now on that topic.
Prentice Lee Superintendent.
Okay. All right, so uh next, we just wanted to uh do a quick review of the schedule. Um, again, the um, I think parents and students have received this. Brian can pop it up on the um screen. It doesn't need a lot of um explanation. Uh, we've incorporated uh some feedback uh on the schedule, as you remember. Uh, we moved to teacher-directed uh remote on Wednesdays. And uh we also have, I'll wait until Brian. No, thanks, Brian. I can see it. And we've also added uh five minutes uh additional to passing periods because we got a lot of uh feedback from both students and staff that that uh five-minute period between classes was even in remote is very difficult uh to make that pivot, get out, get in another Zoom uh to move forward. So uh the um time uh was taken from uh office hours at the beginning and end of the day. So um this is the schedule that we will be using uh as we move forward.
Prentice Lee Superintendent.
Okay, uh, next up is um health and safety. We already talked about diagnostic uh testing a little bit. Uh, Dan, do you want to, and maybe even Tom and John, do you uh um, is there anything to add further than the uh really um kind of impressive uh and needed um preparations that have done been done in the building? I know Pat's had had an opportunity to be in one of the buildings uh when he was at testing, so he want to make, might want to make some comments when you guys are done. But Dan, anything you want to add to the conversation tonight?
Just that really the building, I mean, the buildings are really ready. They've been finalizing a lot of stuff, putting a lot of finishing touches on stuff. So um with that, I'd open it to the principals if they want to comment.
John Gilley, principal.
John and Tom, anything you guys want to touch on tonight?
Yeah, I agreed. I thought Diego did a great job in our uh student board report, kind of outlining some of the um kind of initiatives we put in for health and safety. Um, you know, from separating uh our hallways and stairwells to uh getting classrooms set up in a very safe uh and distanced manner, uh as well as dealing with a lot of our big spaces that we're trying to uh manage to uh allow 450 students in a space. Um, but also have them monitored and um students there in a in a safe wa- safe way uh as well. So uh just pleased with those that are in the building, though. Uh, as they come in, everyone is respectful, mindful of what we're asking. Uh, and so we're grateful for everyone's um participation uh in a in a real healthy way. So, thank you.
Tom, anything to add?
Tom Coolen, test principal. I agree. I think we're, you know, the the physical infrastructure is in place, um and we feel really good about it. Um, the thing that's happening now is a lot of our staff is um coming in and practicing utilizing all of the technology because um what you may not understand is there's not just a one-size-fits-all. You just plug in and you're ready to roll. Um, you have to do a lot of customizing of your technology based on the type of teaching you're doing, the setup of your room, how you want the students to interact with one another, uh where you want the sound to be. Um, and there's all kinds of things that happen um when you put multiple uh computers in a room and have people with sound on. It creates a lot of feedback, so we're kind of going through and fine-tuning different um strategies that we can use. Um, our administrative teams are doing that. A lot of our staff, teachers, are coming in and doing that. Um, and they're getting a lot of advice and guidance, not only from our tech department, but also from our instructional coaches and our uh staff members that have been in um teaching for several weeks. They're sharing um kind of words of wisdom and guidance and tips. Um, so we're all kind of in the process of fine-tuning as best as we can um to make sure that all of the technology uh not only works but is kind of optimized for the best types of classroom um experiences that we can produce in a hybrid model.
So Tom and John, so Prentice, the student, is going to enter Libertyville and Vernon Hills on Thursday, November 12th for the first time uh this school year in the hybrid. So what are you going to expect me and my, maybe my parents to do before I come to school? And then what does it look like when I come to school that day? What do I, what's my obligation to do before I ever step foot on the campus?
Well, I'll, the the first part, before you come to school, we uh, we will be sending home. Uh, John has a video for Vernon Hills. I have a video for Libertyville High School that I made, worked on with our school nurse, Cam Trout. Um, all students who are participating in hybrid and their families will be expected to watch that video. It goes through all the health and safety protocols for our school from the moment you wake up in the morning to when you arrive on campus uh to when you leave for the day. And um we will also have a webinar that we will be doing the week, a couple of days before we go back. And uh we'll be asking students who are participating in the hybrid to um go through all of that information very carefully with their families and then sign a pledge that says they've watched the information that they're aware of all we're asking them to do and that they're making a commitment um to do those things. So I'll turn it over to John to talk about kind of what happens every morning when a student gets up.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. We, and Tom and I are in kind of in step with those uh pre-school, pre-hybrid expectations. The one, the other, one thing that we're doing uh for both of our groups of freshmen and new transfer students is uh opening the school after hours on a couple of days before the hybrid kicks off to allow them into the buildings, to um maneuver through the hallways, figure out where their classes uh are at and what a day might look like as they traverse uh through the buildings. Uh, you mentioned what happens when a student comes to school. So again, we've said this uh many times. We'll say it in the video again. And our expectations that we want students to show up as close to the start of school as possible, uh with, of course, not being late. Uh, but uh just, you know, one of our biggest stresses is is trying to figure out where to put students who are waiting uh and that before school time and that before uh the afternoon blocks time. Uh, those are the, those are the two kind of moments. Uh, those are the, those are the two kind of moments during the day where we have to do the most kind of figuring in terms of where to put kids, so we want kids to show up as close to the start of the school day as possible so that they can go straight to their classrooms. As they enter the building, they'll be walking through those uh temperature scanners, uh washing hands or sanitizing hands as they come through. Uh, and ideally headed right to class where a teacher will greet them, uh and they'll join their, their hybrid lessons, so. Yeah, I, I think that probably covers it unless you have any specific questions.
Well, one more, one more question, so uh when Prentice gets ready to come in, do I have to do any self-assessment before I come to school?
Yep, good point, that's part of what we want uh everyone um who enters the building to do, not just Prentice the student, but Prentice the superintendent as well. Uh, every time he walks into uh one of our buildings, goes through that self-assessment check. Uh, they're posted at the beginning or at the entrances of our schools as well. And uh, you know, the, the idea there is, is kind of personal responsibility that if you have any of those um kind of health identifiers or risk identifiers, symptoms, uh that you don't come into the building, that you uh take the day off until they're better, that you get a doctor to, to address those symptoms, uh or that you get yourself te- tested. So yeah, there is that health uh symptom checker that we would expect, uh and that's part of the commitment that Tom talked about earlier that uh students who enter in the hybrid are committing to doing that self-check on a daily basis.
That's good, and so uh the students and parents should look for uh your video, the follow-up information, and if they have any questions after that, certainly they should contact either Libertyville, Vernon Hills uh High School, and somebody will be happy to help them uh in answering any other questions. I've seen the um kind of the draft video, it's, it's really very good and it's very self-explanatory, and it should be very helpful for uh people, uh once you put that out, you have, both have your webinars. So Pat, you've had an opportunity uh to see uh at least one of the buildings and some of the work that's been done in there, so do you want to comment on that at all?
Yeah, so I'd love to, so um Tom and I had a, a, an amount of time on Wednesday to go through the building, and I, I got to tell you, first and foremost, it was great to be back in the building. Uh, it, it really uh, it was just really great, great to, great to have a chance to walk through the building, see it. Second, it's incredible the amount of work that you guys have done to prepare. Um, someone said, we're ready, and I agree, uh what I saw on Wednesday, we are ready. The buildings are in great shape, um, the temperature monitoring system as you go into the buildings are, are fantastic. And what they do, um, the way the hallways have been organized is great, uh the signage is, you know, very apparent. And, and so, you know, I just kind of a, a appeal to everybody when we finally get there. Um, let's respect all the procedures and protocols that we have in place, let's do everything we can to keep the place safe. Um, because I can assure you that there have been a lot of people behind the scenes working very, very hard to make this work successfully. Um, so I just want to say thanks to everybody that's been doing that. Um, it, it's just apparent that in addition to all the things we normally do to open our school buildings, uh they've gone above and beyond and you know, not only done a lot of work, but a lot of very careful thought has gone into it um to make it all work. So it's, it's really a, it's a fantastic job, and I wish, I, I wish you guys get more credit for, for all the hard work you've done.
Okay. All right, so that's uh our overview there uh for tonight, so um if you recall our schedule, we're going to be bringing groups of kids into the building and then home, and then into the building and home. So for a number of our students in the district, that will require transportation, and normally we're transporting kids at the beginning of the day and the end of the day. So the buildings have uh worked very closely with uh our, uh Dan and our bus company. And Dan, I didn't know if you wanted to make any comments about transportation tonight uh and uh how the arrangements are going for uh this unique setup that we'll have for transportation.
Um, yeah, the, the biggest information was getting the list of uh students in the AB split that are going to need transportation, getting that to them to work on the routes to uh get everything to work within the timeframe, so they have that information, and I know um took, some of it took a little bit longer than anticipated just with kind of working out the kinks with splitting up the groups. Uh, but they have that information and working on those routings, and so um I think, I think everything will work out, so we're just kind of waiting to hear back with the next step for that.
Okay, any questions? John and Tom, anything to add to that? And again, great job to the administrative team behind the scenes that have, that have worked on this. Tom?
Uh, thank you, yeah, there's, there's um, for, for as much as I would like to take all the credit, there's so many people on the team. Um, not just the administrative team, obviously, but our, our um wonderful staff, um, just everybody pitching in and pulling together, so. Um, but thank you for, Dr. Gruddy, for recognizing all of the um work that we've done through the buildings. Uh, Dr. Lee, one clarification that we just want to make uh certain, especially because we know there's a lot of students um and parents watching tonight. The schedule that we showed um doesn't officially begin until November twelfth, the first day of the hybrid schedule. We're still operating on the original extended e-school schedule until then. So they're, they're very similar schedules, but they're different in some of the timeframes and things. We just want to make it clear to the community that the new schedule that we showed uh uh tonight doesn't start officially to, to be implemented until November twelfth.
And so we will continue to repeat that November twelfth date as we have tonight, so no one misses it. And we all know that's the day that we come back uh to school, okay, thanks, everyone. Um, educational support, uh personnel staffing, Brian, do you want to um say a few words about that?
So we do, um, as you can see in our agenda later, in our consent agenda at P and P, um we had looked at bringing some of our um support staff um back into the building um to get ready for hybrid. There's still a lot of, a lot of the prep work that you've seen, Pat, some of the, you know, um, the people in the building have started doing that and getting ready. Um, we'll also have, we've had more students in the building um with some of our classes coming in, and then we'll have more students coming into the building um with hybrid, so we'll be um getting ready for our um next group. You could see that's on, for the uh agenda later under program and personnel committee. And then we'll look at, you know, ahead in November at bringing another group of um educational support staff back. Um, you know, as we get closer to the November twelfth date, so.
Okay, and then um we've had some conversation about tracking COVID nineteen-related expenditures coming out of uh F and F committee uh meeting and had some discussion with the board about that, so. Um, Dan is beginning to process to do that, it's not always a one, you know, one for one, but Dan, do you want to make any general comments tonight about that?
No, we have, um, we've had some account code set up that are very specific to COVID expenses that we're charging kind of COVID unique expenses into that, and so we're going to be using uh that report mostly going forward, and then, you know, as as we add on more things, um, we'll look to allocate those things to those accounts and have um relatively easy way to consistently and persistently report this out on a monthly basis for the board to let them know. Um, let the board and the community know where we're at in terms of our um add-on COVID expenditures.
Okay, and uh I've, I have one other under our school reopening list, uh and this is an update from last Wednesday or Thursday. But um we have been notified that the IHSA has sent uh recommendations uh to IDPH for review um and/or editing and/or approval of uh what winter season athletics might look like. Uh, just for the audience, I think the board remembers this, but uh sometime in the summer, uh IHSA actually um turned over decision-making uh authority to the IDPH and ISBE. So uh IDPH is reviewing what their recommendations are, uh only the IHSA board knows what those recommendations are. Uh, at this point, they were not shared with uh principals across the state, uh nor athletic directors. Uh, so we are told, I believe sometime uh this week, uh that we should hear, IHSA should hear back from IDPH. Uh, and then we should have some, a vision of what uh winter athletic seasons um will look like across the state. So we'll, we'll keep a good thought uh that uh things can be done and we can do them safely uh without um um having to do um large-scale cancellations moving forward, so. Um, as soon as uh Tom and John and our two athletic directors, uh since IHSA is a uh principal-driven organization, they will actually be notified first, as well as our athletic directors, and they, of course, will let us know, and then we will have the opportunity to communicate out uh to the board and uh our parents and students, okay? Uh, any questions before uh we move out of this section?
Yeah, hey, Prentice or Pat, or anybody actually for that matter, maybe, maybe Dan since he has safety, but going back to metrics. So specifically, are there any other metrics that we actually are looking at? Hospitalizations or anything else, and the only reason I ask that, again, when we, when we deferred the decision, we showed those charts and those charts clearly show from basically June through last week, we were in the either hybrid or full return scenario, and we didn't. Which is, again, our, our decision is aborted, of course, but was there, is there anything else we're looking at? Because clearly, based on those charts, the decision says remote. But that goes against the previous decision, so is there, is there other things in there that we are evaluating? You know, i- if we fall back into hybrid, does that mean we automatically go to hybrid? And the answer I think to that is no, but I, I guess we need to understand what the other metrics are, I don't remember other metrics. These were the first time, you know, last few weeks we've seen those. I don't remember anything else, but I don't know if you guys internally are looking at other stuff before you make your recommendations? Or if you, if you are, share that with us, at least we have these other important things. If, if you deem them important, again, I, I don't know, so that's, I, I want to throw that out there for you guys.
Kevin, I'll just add, so we, you know, had historically been tracking the hospitalization data from Lake County, but they stopped posting that. Um, so we haven't had the same kind of access to that data. Part of the reason why they stopped posting it is the numbers were very small, so there was a lot of, a lot of bounce in the numbers, okay? I mean, a one hundred percent change could occur if there were one or two cases. So uh I am concerned across the region that the hospitalizations are up. So I'm not tracking any particular metric in that regard, but I would like to understand that better um in light of some of the recent increases in cases, all right? But, but there really isn't a metric there that we're tracking. So with regard to the, you know, what happened, let's say, since August and September, and you know, it's really easy to look back at the data and say we should have, could have, would have. Um, but that wasn't the situation as we, you know, faced the opening of school and in the early days of opening the school. And keep in mind that part of our strategy in the beginning was to really stabilize our virtual learning platform because we knew we were going to need that going forward anyway, we didn't want, we really didn't have good forward-looking visibility with respect to where things were going to go, and some people did go back to school and so on and so forth, so we made the decision, we did, it is what it is.
Right, yeah, no, and I think, I think that's fair, other than, I guess, if we're looking forward-thinking, right? And we fall into hybrid, does that mean we automatically go to hybrid?
But I think, I think there is, and, and you know, some of the residents have brought this up, there, there is now a bigger body of evidence that all of us need to consider, which is what is happening in places where people have opened school, where they have taken precautions and you know, have done the smart things. We know this, if you haven't done it, and there are countries where this is the case, bad things happen. Okay, that's very clear, if you don't take all the safety precautions, anybody that thinks that COVID doesn't spread in schools hasn't read all the data, okay? But there is an increasing body of data that's starting to suggest that when you do open the schools and you do take the mitigation steps that we've outlined, and you do social distance and you do those right things. There, there frankly, right now, isn't a lot of evidence that suggests that schools have become super-spreading events or super-spreading places, so. I think really that, to answer your question, you know, I don't know that we need more metrics per se, although we certainly should look at the hospitalization data so our region isn't headed to a situation like Wisconsin where they're having to open up tents for hospitals or uh some of the other states where that's happening. I think if that were, were to happen in our region, that would be a very serious thing that we would have to think about, okay? Um, but uh other than that, I think in addition to the few metrics we're looking at, we've got to look at all the other body of evidence and weigh that, you know, appropriately and and uh, you know, whether or not we need to change plans, but right now, I think the plan is to stay the course.
Yeah, no, I do, I agree, and I guess my final question, this may be to Prentice or anybody who knows, do you know how they drew the line in the sand? Because we always know when a line gets drawn in the sand, shh, you're either above or below, right? So who came up with the one point four, the one point six, and this is this, does, does anybody, anybody know that?
Yeah, I don't know specifically, there's been a study in Arizona that I would know is referenced in some metrics, I don't, I didn't look at it in enough detail to really understand. Did they just take their numbers and use them or what? So I, I can't speak to it, I, I'll look into that in more detail.
Um, my guess is it was probably in association with IDP, IDPH, Kevin, but I don't, wouldn't know the obviously the science behind that, you know, why did the line, line get drawn here instead of here or here instead of here? Um, I will uh say this, and this has been uh made uh very clear e- even as the governor has taken other areas in Chicago uh back to mitigation. Um, so DuPage County, Will County, I think Kane County, and then over the weekend, suburban Cook, uh which is a big swath of territory, all the way from the far south suburbs up to um, you know, Lake Cook Road up here. Uh, that's big territory. But what we know, at least at this point, is that if the governor takes an area to mitigation, it doesn't follow that the schools shut down as part of that. So still leaving that local decision at this point up to local schools, even in the counties that have now kind of gone back to mitigation where, you know, no more in-service restaurants, no more in-service bars, probably a restriction on shopping, maybe some other things that would be more akin to probably where we were in April or May last year. So we're still going to have the flexibility to make those decisions locally, uh factoring in all the things that we've been talking about probably all along. Uh, and so for purposes of our discussion tonight, um, you know, at this point, I think, you know, Pat asked a question this earlier, does that necessarily change a decision right now? And um I, I think in the absence of, you know, any voice to the contrary, at this point, it, it doesn't change anything right now. Um, and probably until you get a little bit more data and we put that in the context of, you know, where the area is, and you all have a chance to consider that uh moving forward, but our plan right now is to open on November twelfth, that's what we're getting ready for.
All right, thank you.
Can I chime in real quick? I, I think, and, and I struggle with that same question that, that Kevin has, you know, what can we use to really guy, help guide us that's factual, that can really help us make the best decision? And I think we've, many of us have all along said, there's no real magic number, there's no one metric, you can't look at just this metric or that metric, or you can't look at just six oh oh four eight and make a decision based on, on one set of numbers, you have to look at, at a bigger picture. And I, I just want to toss out that, you know, the, the, the decision that was made in a, a week ago or whenever that meeting was, they all tend to blur together anymore. That, that decision was made in part by recommendations from the Lake County Health Department, they came right out and, and made certain recommendations, so. I don't know that it's any one given number or any one given set of numbers, I think we, we look at things as we learn and as we understand the, the, the situation, but um I too have often struggled uh with, I wish there was some, you know, set of magic numbers that we could say, this is the real reason uh that we make a decision. But uh shy of that, we just have to use our best judgment and, and go with the information that's presented to us.
Prentice, I hate to even ask this, I, I hope we're never in this situation. What if the governor says for our area that mitigation measures include a change from a fifty-person limit to a twenty-five-person limit? What does that do to our hybrid implementation?
Well, that's actually a great question, and it's, it's one we're probably still gaming out a bit because after we thought that Lake County was going to go to mitigation, one of the things we know for sure that comes with mitigation is that the um no more than twenty-five people in a space um rule comes into effect even for schools. So um, you know, I, all of our class sizes will be okay, we may have to make some adjustments. you know, I, all of our class sizes will be okay. We may have to make some adjustments. Uh, for example, where kids come in the morning and, and those types of things. But I think our thinking at this point is we can manage that. If we get to that point and the key Lisa is that if, uh, as we understand it, at least right now, the areas that have gone to mitigation based on, you know, a, a number of lawyers in, in, including our own. Um, if we go to mitigation, the one thing that will apply to schools is no more than 25 people in the space at a given time. Right? So-
And I, Prentice, can I, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we've had, working in a school district in a county that's in this mitigation scenario right now. We struggled with that and, and we've asked that question multiple times and what does that mean? And we've been told that that 25 limit does not impact school districts. It does impact businesses and other uh, large gatherings, but that the school districts are still allowed up to 50 people in a space. That's what I understand. I'm not a lawyer. I, I can't guarantee that, but that's what, uh, we understand as a, you know, as a, a district in one of those counties.
Yeah, Jim, I, I can only tell you that several of the lawyers up here at different districts and the Lake County Health Department are saying that it does apply uh, to us. So-
Yeah. Uh, we were, we were questioning that for days and-
Well, that's because everybody's waiting for clarification on that from Illinois Department of Public Health. Because that's where that emanates and that's kind of where we all are at. Uh, at this point. So that's one of the things that they need to clarify, then it's crystal clear, right? But, uh, apparently my, not take too long in this, but my understanding is that was part of the framework that was created like in, over the summer. And they have not had to reference back to that. Um, as a reference, as it relates to schools. So, um, apparently, uh, you know, as all of us, they have to go back and take a look at the genesis of that, how they arrived at that. Um, et cetera. So we will see going forward and we'll see clarification on that. And the, and Jim, that's a really important question because re- remember the liability insurance question. Because no school districts have liability, but we have an inherent higher threshold for somebody to meet to successfully take on a government agency. Uh, and that requires us to follow the, um, you know, guidance of our related agencies. So that 25 question would be a very important question on the liability insurance front. Uh, until the legislature goes back to veto session, and I'm sure they're going to pass a legislation that will grant immunity to school districts.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's interesting because, uh, I mean, given that the, the additional requirements for social distancing, the six feet, whatever. I don't think there's many classrooms in any of our buildings that could hold 25 people and keep them socially distanced properly. So it's more of a, a concern with the larger spaces, the gymnasiums, the lunchrooms, the, the, the larger classrooms, maybe a band room or something like that. In my mind, it's more a, a concern, the 50 versus 25 in one space. Because again, you were talking earlier, the kids arrive at school, where do you put them as they're coming in? If you can only have 25 people in that entryway, that's not very many people. And that includes the, 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 the staff that are checking the students in and whatnot. So that, that has a big difference, not necessarily in the classroom as much because we already know we're going to be less than that, but in, in all those other spaces. And that's the, that would be the, the concern.
Okay.
It's a good question, Lisa.
Prentice Lee Superintendent.
Okay. We good? Any other questions in that section? Okay. Thank you. And, and thank you to the work everyone's done to get us to this level and to be looking forward to, Thursday, November 12th. Okay. We had, uh, complete superintendent's report tonight. We had one FOIA request. Uh, the request was received on 9/28/2020. The response deadline was 10/5/2020. The requester was Tanner F., uh, Tanner@K12TransportationResearch.com. Information requested a copy of the current contract with First Student, Lakeside Transportation and Safeway Transportation. Follow-up was done by Dan Stanley and Carol Skodin, and the request was fulfilled and the response was sent on 10/5/2020. And Pat, that completes the superintendent's report for tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Um, the consent vote is listed. We reviewed it earlier in the month. Could I ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed?
Move to approve that vote agenda?
Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion? Not roll call, please?
Batson. Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Is that it, Carol?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Program and Personnel Chairperson Batson.
Thank you, Dr. Groody. We have, um, board policy updates. Uh, there's a group of policies here that are up for second reading and adoption. We've reviewed these both in our, uh, previous month's, um, board meeting as well as in the Program and Personnel Committee meetings for both, uh, September and October. They include just briefly Policy 2:260, Uniform Grievance Procedures, Policy 2:265, Title IX Sexual Harassment Grievance Procedure, Policy 5:10, Equal Opportunity, uh, Equal Employment Opportunity in Minority Recruitment. Uh, Policy 5:20 Workspace Harassment Prohibited, Policy 5:100 Staff Development Program, Policy 5:220 Substitute Teachers, Policy 7:10 Equal Education Opportunities, Policy 7:20 Harassment of Students Prohibitive, and, uh, Policy 7:180 Prevention in Response to Bullying, Intimidation and Harassment. And lastly, Policy 7:185 Teen Dating Violence Prohibited. So, uh, we need a motion and a second to approve these policies.
I move to approve these policies.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions or comments? Okay. Roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Groody.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye. Okay. Motion passes. Uh, the other item on the, uh, Program and Personnel Committee Agenda is the employment of employees. There's, uh, uh, six ESP staff recalls. There's a coaching and extracurriculars, uh, staff resignation, two of those, and a, uh, coaching and extracurriculars activity staff replacement, one of those. Um, can we have a motion in a second to approve these?
Motion to approve the employment of employees is listed.
Second.
Okay. Uh, any questions, comments? Okay. Hearing done. Uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Groody.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Okay. That motion passes, uh, and that unless there's something under the other category from anybody. Hearing done. That concludes the Personnel, Program and Personnel Committee, uh, Report. Back to you, Dr. Groody.
Pat Groody, President.
All right. Facilities and Finance Chairperson Huber.
All right, Dan. Let's talk some tax levy.
Daniel Stanley Business.
Yeah. Uh, all right, let's see. Share this.
Daniel Stanley Business.
Hey Dan, while you're loading that up, you want to kind of give a summary of how we do the tax levy in terms of timing of what you present tonight versus what you present, kind of the steps along the way. So this is step blank and we got the, you know, you know what I mean? Just kind of walk, walk us through exactly what else besides tonight, we're going to see regarding the levy and when?
Sure. Um, so really, um, levy discussions, things that impact the levy discussion goes back to, um, the budget preparation because our budget that we're in right now assumes something of our levy that you're working on right now. So there's some of that discussion back then. That's, so it's over the summer. Um, but then more recently, once we get actual numbers, um, it's, it really take, the process takes over for October, November. Um, it's, we have to have a levy adopted and filed to the county clerk's office by the last Tuesday in December. And so I always like to give us, um, a month buffer there and have it adopted in November in case you, we somehow cannot have uh, a quorum getting together in November because that has happened to me before. Um, and so we just want to make sure there is no opportunity to file late. So that's the process. So in our committee meeting, was it two weeks ago? Um, we, we went through a lot of detail on this and so presenting some information tonight. Um, and then I have a next up slide at the end, but essentially it'll show, you know, a final review of this at our committee meeting, which is next week. And then, uh, uh, look for final adoption at our November 9th board meeting. So November has a very early board meeting um, in the month. So November 9th would be the, uh, adoption.
Great. Thanks. So we talked about it four times basically, right? Committee meeting, board meeting, committee meeting, final approval, the board meeting. And, because we've already talked about it for a couple hours at the last committee meeting.
Correct. So yeah, in terms of the, the actual talking about the actual levy that's going to get adopted, it's really the four meetings, but there's, there's also a composition about it during the budget process and that has definitely a few meetings on it, admittedly not on just the levy, but, but it's discussed there as well.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, assuming you all can see the screen, right? Does it look great? Okay. Uh, so 2020 levies. So just, um, review real quick. Um, our major sources of revenue, we have local, which is property, mostly property taxes, school fees. Well, not this year, um, but normally school fees. Um, state funding is evidence-based funding. They used to be called general state aid. That's the way that the state funds schools largely. Um, also transportation, they reimburse us for some of our transportation costs. Uh, and then a federal source of revenue, the biggest example of that is going to be the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Um, so that helps fund, um, our students with, uh, special needs. So let me show you this slide in terms of a breakdown. So the National Center for Educational Statistics puts out information every year in terms of how school funding happens across the United States. Over the United States, what you typically see on average among states is a split between the local and the state, and then the federal kicks in about nine percent. In Illinois, um, it is typically what you see is more emphasis on the local property taxes, less contribution from the state. And this has been more exact, this has been, it, it's been a much smaller percentage in previous years, but in recent years they updated, um, the methodology that they use, which, um, shows more state contribution. Um, then you have District 128 and, um, our largest source of revenue by far is property taxes. And so that's uh, really due to, um, the property wealth in this district relative to, um, other districts. And so the state, uh, automatically doesn't kick in a lot of money because they recognize the wealth of this district, the wealth of the property values in this district. And so you're allocated less. And then also, you know, over the years, you know, I couldn't tell you when the last referendum was, but essentially the community, um, uh, voting to support, um, that level of funding in the community.
Dan, the answer to your question, it was back when Vernon Hills School was built.
And I won't tell you where I was when that was built, but it was a period of a long time ago.
Yeah.
Um, so, so, uh, another thing to keep in mind is when we're talking through our levy, this is our major source of revenue. And so the thing that we are, we are always battling is inflation. Um, that's just the average increase of the cost of goods or services. So uh, salaries go up, you know, we have a teacher's contract that is in place. Uh, so those go up, costs of goods go up. Um, even a, even in a pandemic, a cost of goods, uh, go up. Uh, so that, that's a thing to keep in mind. Inflation, the average is about two percent. So that's probably a helpful thing to kind of keep in mind. Um, the history here of CPI, which is really the cost of inflation that we're talking about. Um, you can see the 10-year history there and there's a trend line right at about two percent. You can kind of visualize through that. The CPI that is up for this levy for this year is 2.3. So that's higher than it has been the last few years, last several years. It has not been this high, um, since 2012. Um, but the average is still works out to be very close to two. This just happens to be, I would say, an up year. Uh, but it is the highest that it's been in quite some time. And this is not this year's CPI. That was the CPI from December, uh, 2019. So it's, it's always kind of a gear in the gears. Basically what it's showing you is the cost of, cost of goods and services increased a fair amount in 2019. And so then 2020, obviously with the pandemic and everything going on, you will, you will likely see a CPI that's more reflective of what's actually happening in, you know, in, in our climate. In 2020, we will see that in 2021 when we look at this process again a year from now. So your property tax extension, so this is the money that you've gotten from property taxes. Here's the history of that. Um, you can see it, it does not always go up. There are years that it's gone down. Some of those years are based on, um, uh, debt that's been paid. And then in 2014, there, uh, was, um, a board decision to lower the property tax. Um, back in 2014, it jumps back up a bit in 2015, uh, but then down back in 2016. But that 2014 action was to lower actually the levy. And I got the next slide I will show you, but since the bonds were paid off by the district in 2016, you've just seen that kind of steady increase, which is really reflective of the CPI, uh, and new property, uh, coming into the district. So from that 2014 reduction, um, this is a, a slide to illustrate essentially how, the way the property tax system works. In Illinois, is that a one-year decision, um, to, uh, reduce or do whatever you want to do with property taxes has, has effects for years later. And so in 2014, the ridiculous decision to lower the tax, the tax levy a fair amount. And then in 2015, that had a lingering effect of about a million and that slowly will increase theoretically, I mean, not theoretically, that, that, the number would slowly increase about CPI for each year going forward. So there is even right now, or last year, or even this year, an already existing $1.3 million, the levy is less because of that decision that was made in 2014. So that continues to have an impact on the amount of money that the district is able to secure for the revenues. So now in terms of our values, our property, our property values are largely depending on, or I mean, excuse me, our, our levy is largely dependent on our property values and understanding kind of what's been changing there. And so you can see the last 10 years or so, a bit of a roller coaster ride, um, kind of coming down during, uh, recession times and kind of coming back up. And you've seen the, what we've seen the last few years is the growth slowing. So the difference between 2014 to 15 to 16, that was a pretty fast growth. And you've seen the last few years, it kind of tapering off and slowing down. So we've seen the values, the increase of values kind of slowed down. And our 2020 estimate essentially is showing that our values are about flat uh, for next year. Um, you know, industrial has stayed pretty, pretty, um, pretty, uh, stable. Commercial has been pretty stable overall, which you really see is the impact of the residents. So our largest portion is residential and, uh, that's where you see, um, a lot of the value changes. And so we're projecting it's, it's flat. Uh, based on information from the county, the county gives me information and I kind of look at a, I look at all the parcels, uh, really, and looking at that aggregate information, kind of pick at it a little bit to understand what, what we see is happening. Same with new properties. So one of the factors that goes into our levy is how much new property is coming on. So that could be, um, uh, new commercial ventures coming online. So we had Uncle Julio's come on a few years ago, if you remember, uh, that gets added to the tax rules. Uh, you'll see a number of things like Melody Farms, a lot of those been developed. Um, the, all of those things are in a TIF zone. So that's a tax increment financing zone. Um, that essentially means that, that our school district in, in our feeder as well, um, would not be able to access that value. So our, that taxable value is frozen to us. Um, so we got like, I want to say, it might be a thousand dollars or something. That was whatever that property was before it was TIFT. Then it was TIFT, it was frozen at that value and then we won't be able to access that value for another 23 years or so. And so we have a few tips in the district. There's one in Libertyville, we've got one in Oak Grove. And, uh, uh, Vernon Hills. And so, you know, we take that into account and remove those from the equation because that's not, that, that's not tax dollars we can access. That's, that's something that goes into the TIF zone and the TIF fund that pays for, pays for those projects. Um, so our estimate that we've gotten from the county is very similar to our trend. So our estimate that we've gotten from the county is very similar to our trend. It's about 14 million that we're using as an estimate. There's a number that the county gives us as an estimate. We won't know what the real number is until spring. But if you recall, I told you we have to have a levy filed by the last Tuesday in December, so we have to file this levy before we know what all the numbers are. So we do our best guess based on the information that we have. So you can see our trend line there, that little red line is about 14 million, and so that's right in line with what we've been trending. So in terms of what the law allows us to access is, I'm estimating that our extension will be 82,300,000. So what is that reflective? That's a 2.3 is the CPI, so that's the rate of inflation. Again, that's a higher CPI than we've seen in the last few years. And then the new property coming on, so that 14 million is reflects about a point, 0.46% increase for a total increase of 2.76. So what does that mean? That does not mean that your taxes are going up 2.76%. What that means is that on average, existing properties, they're, the portion for District 128 would go up 2.3% relative to the change in your assessment. So what does that mean? So when you get your, you know, I don't remember what color it is, but when you get your little assessment sheet and you look at the assessment, if your assessment was flat, so if it didn't change, then your property, your property taxes would go up 2.3%. If your assessment went down, for whatever reason, if it went down, your taxes would increase by less than 2.3%, or they might be flat or go down depending on how much your assessment went down. If your assessment went up more than 0%, so if it increased, you likely would see an increase beyond the 2.3%. So it's all, this is the average of all the properties in the district, and there are a lot of properties in the, this is a pretty big district. So there's a lot of average happening here. That's what I'm anticipating. Yes.
Just to clarify that, though, it's how much your assessment goes up or down relative to everybody else's.
Correct. And so normally, and so, but what we're anticipating is the average increase is 0% for EAV. When I showed you a few slides ago, the EAV is, we're projecting it flat.
Yeah.
So normally, EAV goes up 1%, 2%, 3% a year. You know, it would go up a lot more in, you know, better times a decade ago, or more than a decade ago at this point. That that hasn't, we haven't really seen that. So it looks relatively flat. So that's what I'm anticipating is flat assessments will mean about a 2.3% increase. So that's what I'm, what I'm, what I'm estimating, the law will come back and say, this is how much you can access. But then the question is, well, what do you actually levy based on that information? So here is my best shot at trying to give you a big picture view. Really, the number to show you is what I would, what I would suggest is levying 82. So if I'm saying, so if I go back, so my estimate is the 82,315 that corresponds with, can you see my mouse? Whoops, maybe you can't see my mouse. That corresponds right here with 82,315. There's SEDO IRF, which is not not really part of the calculation. It is still something that is levied and taxed with, but it's, it's, it's not capped. It's something kind of outside the calculation for the state. So I'm recommending levying according to to adding, so the 82,315, I recommend levying 82,590, which is essentially a 3.1% increase more than the 2.76%. I think we're only going to get the 2.76%, so I'm adding a cushion of, call it point, what, point, point two, point two four, point three four percent. There's a cushion there, and that that equates to a cushion of about 274,000 more than what I think we're actually going to do. So on the grand, on the big picture scale, you know, we've been pretty accurate at guessing our levy. And so, you know, we've been talking about kind of what that cushion is for several years now, and so that's kind of where I'm basing it on. And I normally would probably lean towards a slightly lesser levy. But with this year and with border review and people challenging assessments, I'm guessing this is a bigger task this year than it has in previous years, kind of with everything going on with COVID, especially from potentially the commercial and industrial side. A lot of, a lot of companies now, granted, the way the property valuation works is it's supposed to be of January 1st of the year. So they're supposed to consider the property values as of January 1st, 2020. And as of January 1st, 2020, everything was still, you know, kind of normal at that point. So this would be whatever kind of happened after that should be taken into consideration. But that is not going to stop people from challenging their assessments and going for border review. So I'm anticipating there's probably going to be more assessment changes than we would normally have. And so that makes me want to be just a little bit more cautious than I would be otherwise. So that's really the information I have. The next steps, I've talked about hopefully review at our November 2nd committee meeting, which is a week from today. And then final review at our November 9th board meeting, which is two weeks from today. So that is what I have.
All right, questions for Dan?
Pat Grody, President.
So Kevin, let me just make one comment. So one of the things Dan and I have been talking about is actually probably in a couple months to actually do some more forecasting and long-range planning on our revenue and expenses, so we can take a look at that. We haven't looked at that for a little while. The other thing I just want to put in perspective as I've kind of looked at, you know, this increase and compared it, let's say, to a possible tax freeze and what the impact would be. So obviously, the impact on on the district would be, we probably wouldn't realize upwards of a $1.6 million or so if it was a 2% increase. But for a, for a resident with a tax bill of about $15,000 a year, like one of our residents said earlier tonight, about a third or 30% of that actually goes to District 128. So if you take 2% of that number, which is Dan's kind of average increase, and again, assuming your assessment is flat on average, okay, that means about an incremental $100 plus or minus a little bit to a taxpayer of a $15,000 property tax bill, if my numbers are correct. So I just want to highlight sort of what the impact is that we're, we're talking about there. Obviously, everybody's individual number would be different depending on whether your assessment goes up or down. But in aggregate, on average, it's probably in the range of about $100 on a $15,000 property tax bill.
Daniel Stanley Business.
I would say that number's probably a tad low.
Again, it just, all I did was if you take a third of 15, which is call it 5 grand or 30%.
Oh, yeah. Okay. If you're talking about just our portion, okay, sure.
Just our portion. I'm just looking at our portion as 100, roughly $100. Obviously, across all the taxing bodies, it would be higher, but the D128 portion, instead of 4,500, you'd be looking at about 4,600.
I think that's correct. Yeah, and that was another thing I forgot to mention in the presentation was, you know, if you recall, it was a little confusing to explain our property taxes once again because of timing and all that kind of stuff. And really, our revenues this year are basically flat. We've, you know, and some of that was our decision in terms of student fees, but a bigger thing is anticipating much, much, much less interest income, as we've seen a lot of those rates tank and they continue to stay very, very low. Even long-term rates are very, very low. And then probably anticipating, I'm probably going to be anticipating a bit less state revenue. Because if we don't, if there is not something stepped in to help out Illinois from the federal level to kind of fill their gaps, you know, schools are going to be hit. And, you know, like I mentioned, our transportation system, it's a reimbursement system. Well, if you're not having transportation, you're spending less on that, then there's less to get reimbursed. Now, in the grand scheme of things, I think you're better off not spending it, not getting reimbursed because you don't get reimbursed 100%, but that's still a revenue source that's getting impacted. So this is something for us to keep in mind, too, that, yeah, this looks like 2.3, and I get, I get how that looks. But in the grand context of everything, we're still looking at flat revenues across the district.
All right, thanks, Dan. Good job.
All right. Any other questions for Dan? Seeing none, you want to move on to the bid recommendation that we need to make a motion on, please?
Yeah, so this was, you know, Mark, Mark and his team, the design team, engineers and stuff, once there was identified a few spaces in LHS that did not have the ventilation that they really need, he kind of went after that. So Mark, you want to present that information?
Sure. Thanks, Dan. We're looking for the board to make a motion to recommend to accept a bid from Source One Mechanical Incorporated of a base bid of $97,600. And also accept alternate number one of $1,000 to perform summationary work after hours if necessary, not to interrupt the academic schedule in the building. The total project cost for the bid with the base bid and the alternate of $98,600. And included in that base bid is a $15,000 contingency fund, contingency allowance, I'm sorry. We had 10 contractors, as a background on this, we had 10 contractors at our pre-bid meeting, and we received seven bids for this project.
And I'd say, I'm sorry, Kevin.
No, no, I'm just going to ask Mark, this one was quite a bit lower than the next lowest bid. In fact, it was half price of one of the bids. Mark, any, have we ever dealt with this company before? Are we comfortable with this company? Obviously, we're comfortable. You wouldn't recommend it. But that's, that's quite a bit lower.
Yeah, so we did, they, we did do background check on them, our consultant did. And they felt comfortable with their, with their the sources that they gave us for recommend, references. So they were approximately, what, $11,000 lower than the next bidder, which we have done work with before. The second, second lowest bidder we did a project for a couple of years ago. So we feel confident that this company can perform the work aspect for.
Okay. I'm sorry, Dan.
One, one important thing, so kind of when adding, I think when adding all of the design fees and everything, Mark, you were saying it was like 120. Is it all right?
Yeah, total project, all in cost with design fees, and we are purchasing the equipment ourselves. Total project cost around $120,000.
Right. So the important thing to understand is kind of where, where are we paying for that from, right? It would be a helpful thing for us to answer. So this is, we're targeting this for our district capital. But so, you know, Mark and I were looking at the numbers, this is really going to kind of cap out our district capital for this year and kind of moving and delaying other projects. Obviously, this is something that's super high priority to do. But this is really going to cap us out in terms of capital projects, and it's going to be pretty tight in terms of how that's, it depends on how some of the projects shape out. And do we, you know, do we spend all of the allowance that we've kind of put in there for some other projects? But that's where it'll come from. It'll be pretty tight. And, you know, I think you can make a pretty easy argument that this is COVID-related, but you can probably go either way. I mean, the reason for the urgency of this is kind of recognizing it under the circumstance. But this is something that we should be doing no matter if COVID is here or not.
Okay. Quite other questions of Mark or Dan? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the bid as presented for $98,600 to One Source Mechanical, Inc.?
So moved.
Second, okay. So it's been moved and seconded. Any further comment? All right, seeing none, you want to call it, Carol?
You're muted, Carol. Sorry about that. Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Groody.
All right, motion carries. Any other for facilities and finance? Any board members? No? Okay, turn it back over to Pat. Thanks.
All right, SEDO, Karen.
Pat, can I jump in real quick? I said there was nothing, but given there were some comments about the IASB, can I just take a minute here?
Sure.
Okay. All the board members should have received this pack, this packet, the committee reports. So I know there was at least one comment in the, the public comments about one of the resolutions here. So each year, and just to refresh and then also explain how we're doing it this year that's different. Each year during the, the fall, the Illinois Association of School Boards develops this set of recommendations that they will use as their, their guidance to assist with pushing for better legislation, improved school code, that kind of thing. That process extends, starts earlier in the year and culminates in a meeting where we have one board member from each district in the state meet during the joint conference, the annual joint conference.
Jim Batson, VP.
And we meet and discuss these resolutions and vote on them on behalf of our individual school boards. That process has changed a little bit. We have the, the Resolutions Committee report as we normally do. That meeting is usually several hours long where it gives a very structured opportunity for people to comment on those resolutions. Now, none of these are binding. They're not, you know, we're not voting on any law or anything. We're voting on our recommendations for the Illinois Association of School Boards to, to, to recommend to the legislators and whatnot in Springfield. So, so our vote is really just a vote of affirmation of these resolutions and, and belief statements. Normally, that happens, as I say, in a multi-hour meeting on the Saturday of the joint conference. Since that is not possible this year, the joint conference will not be in person. They've split it up into three groupings of meetings, two meetings for conversation about the, the different resolutions and the ability to ask questions. And then one final meeting to take votes to, to, you know, do basically our, our annual meeting for that, that group. One of those discussion meetings has already taken place. That took place last week. It was an initial discussion on many of these resolutions. We will be discussing these next Monday, so I would encourage anyone that has an interest to take a look over them. We won't go through every one of them, but I'd like to address any questions or comments or concerns that any of the board members have on any of these resolutions, and we certainly will be discussing the, the resolution that was brought up in public comments. So these will be discussed, and that's next Monday already, in our Program and Personnel Committee meeting beginning at 5:30. And then subsequent to that, there's an additional resolutions discussion on the 5th, which would be the Thursday after our committee meeting. And then our final vote will be the delegate assembly held on the 14th. It's a Saturday. It's at 10 a.m. We'll actually meet that Monday at a board meeting as well. So if there's anything that comes up next Monday that we want to discuss or get some additional information on, I could always ask those questions on that Thursday and come back to the, the board on Monday, the 9th with any of that feedback, if anyone has questions or, or concerns on any of that. So I just wanted to sort of go through that timeline. We got next Monday. They have next, I have next Thursday, and then we can have one more opportunity to discuss at the board meeting on the 9th before we actually vote on the 14th. So any questions or comments on that?
No, but I appreciate you clarifying that process because it is different in years past, and we did have some community interest in one resolution in particular. So thank you for taking the time to clarify the timeline.
Yeah, sure. No problem. Thanks, Jim. Yep. Karen SEDO.
Karen Lundstedt, Secretary.
Just as, as our district did, they followed the guidelines of the Health Department of the county and are going to postpone any kind of in-person learning until the 5th of November.
All right. Thank you. All right. So we're going to convene an executive session. Brian, just to, just to clarify, when we come back, we're going to use the same link that we used tonight. Is that correct? Because I think last time we had some trouble getting back in.
Yeah, so the link you use to get into this meeting from webinar person, use that to get back into that meeting.
Okay. All right. And, and we'll use the other link for the closed session. All right. Is there a motion to convene executive session on collective negotiating matters, 5 ILCS 120 slash 2C2?
So moved.
Second. All right. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson. Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Groody.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
All right, so motion carries. Again, we will not be taking any act, action following the executive session tonight. So good night, everybody, unless you want to come back and help us adjourn the meeting. All right, bye-bye.